All right, well, let's get started. This is the city council meeting for February 27, 2024. I'm gonna... The invocation is gonna be Pam Miglazoni of the Center for Spiritual Living Temecula Valley, and I'll do the flag salute. So, is she here? Okay, come on up. Please stand.
Good evening. It is my sincere pleasure and honor to be able to represent the Center for Spiritual Living tonight at this beautiful city council meeting. Thank you for this opportunity. And now, if we can just all bow our heads, let us just take that deep, beautiful, cleansing breath, knowing that God is present right here in this very moment, in this beautiful chamber. I know that this loving presence of God works through each of us. I know that there is just but one loving power, and I know, I absolutely know, that tonight's meeting unfolds perfectly. Everything that is to be discussed on the agenda is discussed in love, grace, beauty, and just the loving presence of our beautiful city. I know that God absolutely supports and guides the city of Temecula and all of the loving decisions that we make, and I absolutely know that this is true for everyone that is here to eat this evening, everyone within the sound of my voice and beyond, for we are all one. We are all connected by God's loving power. And so, let's just let this meeting begin this evening. Let it be perfect. Let it be beautiful. Let it be filled with love and joy and laughter and kindness. And I say, thank you, God, and amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Please join me in saluting the flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Mayor Potem Kalfis.
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
I am here.
And Mayor Stewart.
Here. All right, we'll go on to the board and commission reports, and we'll start with community services, which is Mr. Jeff Kingsburg.
Get that going. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council and staff. I'm Jeff Kingsburg, and I'm honored to serve as the 2024 Chair of the Community Services Commission. Our personnel is Commissioner Ernest Castro, Commissioner Gary Adi, Commissioner Kathy Seismore, Vice Chair Juan Hox, and myself, Jeff Kingsburg. And our description is listed on the slide. Again, we're all about supporting TCSD as they promote people parks and programs. Our last meeting was back on February 12th, and we're moving ahead. We received a presentation from the Human Services Department in regards to the programming and progress on the Margarita Recreation Center, and we're looking forward to a grand opening, the grand opening coming up there on March 23rd for the public. We also approved our action minutes from our previous meeting on January 8th. We meet again on Monday, March 11th, and then we're also looking forward to our joint meeting as a full commission with you the following night on Tuesday, March 12th. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now to Mr. Bob Hagel, the Planning Commission.
Good evening. I'm Bob Hagel from the Planning Commission. I'm Chair this year, and this is for the February 21st meeting. Next week, all of the commissioners on our commission will be attending the League of California Cities Planning Commissioners Academy in Long Beach. Next slide. We had two public hearings on the agenda last week. The first was a review of a conditional use permit application for Toast Restaurant to obtain an ABC Type 47, which is an on-sale general eating place alcohol license on Temecula Parkway. There were no public speakers on this item, and the commission voted 5-0 to approve the application. The second item on our agenda for last week was to review an application for modification to a conditional use permit for Pub and Grub Restaurant to extend their hours of operation and entertainment to up to 1:30 a.m. in the morning. The planning commissions reviewed included questions of planning staff, fire prevention, code enforcement, the chief of police, and the deputy city manager. There were no public speakers on this item, and the commission voted 5 to 0 to deny the application. That's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you. So now, we're off to public comments for non-agendized items. Do we have any? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. Ready Commission.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members, and mayor. My name is Crystal Pastorean, and I am the 2024 Vice Chair for Ready. Mr. Farkner is our Chair, and he could not be here tonight, so I am here providing you your report. The Ready Commission is made up of seven residents, of course, who serve together as an advisory group to this council. We make recommendations on the topics of diversity and inclusion and city events, services, programs, and policies that enhance the community relations. Our last meeting was on February 8th. During this meeting, we were able to, of course, have a presentation celebrating African-American History Month or Black History Month. The presentation included the Chair's introductory comments. We had a video outlining the origins of Black History Month, and we were able to review the census data of historical information of Black Americans here, community services overview regarding Black history in the city as well. We were able to view a message from Supervisor Chuck Washington, and in-person comments from Mayor Stewart, and of course, our Ready Commission liaison, Councilmember Schwenk, regarding the proclamation, or the reading of the proclamation, excuse me, and public comments as well. We further discussed, based on council direction, regarding future homeownership and the opportunities for youth. This was an incredible discussion. It was very high-level regarding all the barriers that we were able to put out with regard to youth of the community that they may face in attaining homeownership in the future. We were able to consider those topics in various perspectives, including their own professional, our professional expertise on the, on the commission. For next steps, they noted, we noted the barriers, and we will be consolidating those into various buckets, such as education and resources. Service providers will be identified to match these barriers as well. The discussion will continue at the March meeting. The commissioner and staff will follow up with students and audience who were expressed a desire, as we had several club members who were here. Next slide, please. Our next meeting is March 14th at 6 o'clock here in City Chambers, and we are looking forward to celebrating Women's History Month then. Thank you. I conclude my report.
Thank you very much. All right, now we'll go to public safety report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and our Temecula residents, yes. For January 2024, Temecula Fire Department ran 890 calls, 20 of those being fires, 65 being traffic collisions, and 646 medical emergencies within the city limits. And you can see our ISO rating, which I'm very proud of, is a 2 for the next five years. Next slide, please. As far as fire prevention, our plant checks and reviews, 567 for the month, construction inspections, 535, and then our state mandated or annual inspections, 371, and we had 27 folks come into City Hall to do business with us. Emergency management, a pretty busy month, really heavily focused on cybersecurity, working with the IT team, hosted cybersecurity tabletop exercise here, and 10 jurisdictions showed up, that means other cities, with over 50 participants. It was a success, and it also integrated our EOC to support IT during cyber incidents that may come up. The emergency alert system integration has been completed, so we can alert our residents, so that's up and running. As far as our TCC volunteer program, number of hours for January, 274. They did have one new volunteer enter the program. They had three meetings and one training event, and that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much. Now, we're off to public comments on non-agendized items.
Yes, we are, Mr. Mayor. We have five public comments on non-agendized items. The rules are printed on the agenda. Each speaker does have three minutes. The first speaker is Fay Wands, to be followed by Melissa Bourbonnais.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I don't know if you're like me, but once I decide on who I'm going to vote for, I toss all the ads in the trash. When I got Chuck Washington's ad, along with a few others, I gave them a toss. Later in the day, a friend called, very upset. They said there were a few statements on that mailed ad that were misleading, so I got mine out of the trash. On the backside, in bright red letters, Washington claimed that Jonathan Ingram raised taxes by $14 million. Then, under his statement, in letters so small, you almost needed a magnifying glass to see them, it read, "Washington cites Marietta Council Meeting on 7/17/2018 on Measure T as his source." Measure T was put on the ballot and was passed by Marietta residents who voted for it. The measure was to fund our police and fire departments. I believe our great first responders took a cut in pay when we had a recession, so that there would be no layoffs, so they could keep the same level of service, and that is why today we're still one of the safest nation, the safest cities in the nation. Then, in the next section, Mr. Washington accused Mr. Ingram of increasing the fees for business ventures. That really surprised me, as Mr. Washington was on the Marietta Council, and at one time he was served as mayor, and he knows full well that no one person can raise business fees. That matter would have to go before the council and be voted on and passed by a majority. The last statement Washington made was that Mr. Ingram was a liberal politician. Mr. Ingram was chairman of the Riverside County Rep... Boy, sorry, I'm very nervous, Republican Party, so I think he is mistaken. If you've been around for a while, you should remember, Mr. Washington was appointed to the position of supervisor by a Democratic liberal governor. And Mr. Ingram has always answered his phones, has solutions to problems that have sat on the shelves for a long time, never voted to raise taxes, isn't conflicted in any way, helps anyone in need, and fights for right over wrong. He is educated and has experience in government policies, supports small business owners.
Thank you, Mrs. Wands. Your time is up. The next speaker is Melissa Bourbonnais, to be followed by Laurel Lamont.
Hi, I'm Melissa Bourbonnay. I am here tonight with Upward Community. I don't know that I've mentioned this before, but I have a master's degree in political science. I've taught at the community colleges and at Cal State Fullerton on and off for the past 17 years. I understand politics well, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And when you pay attention to it in practice, the execution of our political system, it looks really ugly. And if I didn't know, if I didn't have this academic foundation, if I didn't know what city council was, what representation looks like, if I didn't know the definitions of political equality and civil rights, I would think this is a country club, a very elite country club. And in a country club, everything looks pretty, and everybody says nice things. And you don't have to answer my questions. You aren't held accountable by constituents, because there's no such thing as constituents, in a country club. So you can do whatever you want, and kiss babies, and shake hands, and take pictures, and do cute videos, playing marketer for your country club. That's what you get to do in a country club when you are operating within a representative democracy. You have an obligation, you have taken an oath to respond to your constituents, to answer our questions, and to look out for our best interest. Would our best interest be the salary of Aaron Adams or raises, cost of living raises? Is that what's in our best interest? I have to ask you rhetorically, because you won't answer my question. And more importantly, you won't answer it on behalf of the workforce in Temecula, which is who we represent. So, once again, because you didn't answer my email, or I should say, you didn't answer my question, what action steps, not words, action steps, have you taken to house the workforce? The workforce that you are dependent upon, the workforce and the people within this community that help fund your salaries? What have you done on behalf of the workforce? Action steps, not a video of a three-and-a-half-hour council meeting that you had a year ago.
Thank you, Melissa. The next speaker is Laurel Lamont, to be followed by Rebecca.
Hi, my name's Laurel Lamont, and I'm here also with Upward Community to represent the local economic workforce, or, as it would appear, your servants. She, Melissa, called it a social club. For me, your meager servant, your grocer, this feels like a kingdom. Aaron, are you the king? Do you dictate whether, that's a question, whether we zone and build for the local workforce, or do we build for your economic earning level? Your base salary, $348,000 a year. You could make a million dollars for all I care. I don't care how much you make. I care what you do. Do you help influence our city council and decide what kind of homes can be built here through zoning? It is my understanding that you do. And I, the local workforce, have to fight for an affordable housing, meager apartment Does the service community matter? Because this is a microcosm, this city, and how it functions, of a greater problem in this country. I know you know what Strong Towns is. I know you know what you're doing. What is the city going to do that the state isn't going to make you do? Will you acknowledge the workforce? Will you meet the workforce? Will you reach back to the workforce when they reach out to you? Will you go out of your way to connect to that service industry in which you want here, but you don't want to zone for or include in your master plan communities? We matter. I'm not asking for your pay. I'm just asking to be included. We, the workforce, wish to be included in your kingdom.
The next speaker is Rebecca, to be followed by Bob Cal.
Good evening, council members. I'm going to be speaking about campaign signs. So, I came to share some experiences I've had while supporting a Board of Supervisor candidate when posting campaign signs. As all of you are aware, the maximum size limit of these campaign signs is 12 square feet. Yet, as our campaign team posted our candidate signs throughout the city of Temecula, the other two candidates, Jonathan Ingram and Chuck Washington, had posted signs measuring 16 square feet, 25 square feet, and even larger in dimension. I was going to show some examples, but I want to say what I want to say first, and I'll show them at the end if I have time, the examples of the signs. So, I visited the Temecula City Code Enforcement Office last Thursday, February 22nd, to discuss this issue, as they are responsible for monitoring campaign signs for any given election. It was explained to me that signs cannot be posted on public land, such as schools or libraries, and that signs can be posted on private land with owner's permission. The issue comes when oversized signs are posted on private land and are not taken down by code enforcement when code enforcement is contacted about this issue. I was told that code enforcement personnel can't take down these signs, as they are on private land. The current process consists of code enforcement personnel contacting the candidate to remove these oversized signs. It was also explained to me that those candidates sometimes don't return calls, and much time passes if they do return those calls. In the meantime, these oversized signs are not abiding by sign regulation and stay up advertising the candidate for days, for weeks, possibly months. In addition, code enforcement is being complacent of this violation every day these signs stay up. I'm here to request that this campaign sign regulation be modified to state that code enforcement personnel can't take down any oversized sign, oversized sign, whether it is posted on public land or private land. Code enforcement removes signs from public land, therefore, they can remove signs from private land in the same manner. I'm requesting a quick solution to this issue. I have filed a complaint against your staff member, Tom Cole, as he is the code enforcement supervisor, who was contacted by my team in the past several weeks with no response regarding the sign violation. I hope that you, city council members, will be diligent in helping to resolve this oversized sign issue. And I have a few seconds, so I'm going to show, see how many signs I could... So this is a Jonathan Ingram sign on the intersection of Temecula and Butterfield State.
Thank you, Rebecca. Your time is up. The next speaker is Bob Cal. And the last speaker is Hanan Rickard.
Well, hi, everybody. Hey, Zach, I like your beard. Just, it looks cool. So anyway, I'm not here for that reason. I'm here to talk about signage. So, the signage, sign wars have gone on since, since I started politics, and that's been a long, long, long time. So, I got involved in politics in 1980, and so, and my first sign wars was probably 1988. And people take down signs, put up signs, move signs around. Zeller Bach got in trouble for moving a sign, and he lost the election for district attorney because of a sign. So, signs are a big deal, and this is going to be coming up more and more as, as I think these elections go on. I'm not the first one up to talk about it. As you can see, if you look at this thing there, the dimensions are, is that 24 square feet? About 24 square feet. And so, I don't know if that is, is legal or not, and I know probably some other people have signs. Oh, I know Williamson has signs that are the size of a train, but anyway, just saying. There are a lot of signs out there that are not legally supposed to be there, and have always been that way, but, you know, what should happen is maybe the city could do a, a video or a program where if you're running for office, these are the guidelines, they know where to find them, so that, 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 that some people think, well, I could put up a 100-foot square fine sign, why not? Well, I guess maybe it's against the law. So, they need to know that before they put the sign up, and then they have to tear it down. So, I know in the, one of the elections, not one of the elections, last election cycle on the 2022, Kate Sanchez had a sign up, and her, I think it was Kate Sanchez, maybe it was you, Jessica, I don't know, but when somebody, somebody's sign was fined $100 a day if they didn't take it down, and that was from, I believe, the city of Temecula. So, they said they were going to fine him $100 a day. Now, whether they were or not, that's another question. So, sign wars have been around for a long time, there's a way to get around it. You can put a little, little grease on the signs, and people won't touch them, things like that. But that's all I had to say. Thank you for right now.
And the last speaker is Hanan Rickard.
Good evening. I just wanted to stop in again and, and just share with, just share the gospel. I don't, I just know what God has done in my life, and, and all the politicians in the very beginning had to at least believe in God to be elected in office, and I don't know if you're all familiar with that, but the way our nation started was very God-centric. And there was a lot of, you know, there's a lot of problems that had to be worked out through time, like the abolishment of slavery, et cetera. Just by the way, about slavery, every nation had that scourge. We were the first one to abolish it, so it tells you something about the roots of our nation and the fabric, which I, from what I gather, is God. And so, my main point of this is just to encourage you to seek the God of our, of our founding fathers, and once you do that, God himself will give you wisdom and direction on how to lead, and that's the best thing you can do for not just us, but yourself, because in the end, we're all going to stand before the, the judge of all the earth, and no one else will be there but you and God, so it's a healthy fear that we should take it to heart personally before, before your position, wherever, whatever you do in this, in this, in this life, in this city. Just remember, put your priorities first, and God will, he will work all things together for your good if you put his best interests first, which is apparently, parent to all men to love one another and contribute to life, and glorify, that's how you glorify God. That's how you glorify your Creator, is by contributing with your free will that God's given you, to yield to that which is right and shun from that which is evil. There is a cost. There is a cost to yielding to what's right. It's going to cost you your life every day, if you get what I'm saying. It may lead to, it may lead to you being a martyr, like a missionary would. But it starts with us being a martyr in our heart, and that's how, that's how we are given more of the Holy Spirit. God love you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes all public comments on non-adjourned items.
All right, so let's move on to council comments, council reports. Do you have anything, Zach? Okay, let's go with Zach.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. If we could go ahead and put up the slide. We have a new park coming online, and I wanted to let the community know about it. So this is Caya Aragon Park. And with a show of hands, does anyone know where Caya Aragon Park is? This is a gem of a little neighborhood in between Rancho Vista and Rancho California Road, near Temecula Valley High School. It's a really cool neighborhood park that I used to often go to my kids with and on my way home with them after school. So Monday, March 11, we'll be opening this park at 10:00 a.m., so the community is invited to that. And then we just cut the ribbon on another park, the Temecula Creek Trail Park, and we have a really cool time lapse that I'd like to show. It's a very short video, so if we could go ahead and roll that to show the community what we've been doing. All right, well, this is the Temecula Creek Trail Park on the south side of town, just east of Butterfield Stage Road. Go check that new park out. And then Mayor Stewart, if you would indulge me, I just want to make a quick comment on public comments. I think it's always important for our public speakers to be heard, but also make sure that you address the city council. Oftentimes, we see staff being taken advantage of, and it's really unfair. The city council is the ones that are in charge, the ones that direct city staff. It's been that way since 1989, and it will continue that way on forward. So let's keep the comments towards the city council. Thank you.
Right. Mayor Protem, do you have anything?
We recently had the ribbon cutting, or groundbreaking, I should say, on the I-15 auxiliary lanes. So me and the kiddos and the wife took a little trip on the I-15 North, and we made a little video for you here to show the groundbreaking ceremony. We'll go ahead and roll that. That's not us at the park.
There we are. Where did they replace?
Oh, yeah, please, just do something about this traffic.
I'd like to welcome everybody here to celebrate this groundbreaking and start construction on another project, relieve the congestion on the I-15 corridor.
For this project, we will construct a new auxiliary lane between Temecula Parkway and Rancho California.
So you will see that construction start in soon, and hopefully we'll have some traffic relief here in the next few years. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. So first off, Zach, thank you so much for showing the park first off, because that was one of the things that I was going to talk about. Actually, okay, let's go here first, elementary school, we'll go here first. I had an opportunity to meet with the third grade classes of Alamos Elementary. There were six classes that I got to meet with, so it was about a half an hour total of one hour of conversation of how we broke it up. And it was a wonderful opportunity just to talk to these little munchkins about government and what we do as city council members. And they were asking me questions of what my favorite color is, and you name it, like these kids had every question. But the really great thing is, is I got to really just talk to them about my day, our days, what it looks like, what the importance of government is here in our city. And I was just really honored and thankful for the teachers, just to give me the opportunity to talk to them. The teachers even had lots of great questions. So again, thank you very much to the third grade teachers of Los Alamos Elementary School for allowing me to visit and spend time with your kiddos. The next thing I was, so here we go, here's the Temecula Creek Trail. Thank you both to the mayor and to Schwank for both going there. I did not have the opportunity. This park is actually three blocks from my house. And I just want to give my report as a city councilwoman, as a resident and a mom of five kids, that that park that you just saw being stripped and then being rebuilt, when I was there, we'd go with my kids to the park because the only one that's really close to ride our bikes to in a couple-minute walk. We would have no kids there, and maybe one, one child possibly, and that's beside my kids. Well, if I tell you, we actually would have, and this is no joke, I showed up to the park, we had over 20 kids show up there. And then I showed up again, I think like two days later, and it was like 20-some-on kids again and their parents. And I'm watching the families walk down the trail and ride their bikes. And so I am thankful. So thank you to staff for putting this together, because this was a really great way to build up the community area that I'm in as well for our kiddos. The only thing I have a question for, this is for the city manager, I guess, can we put a crosswalk possibly right across from there, just FYI? Just so we can put that in there and talk about that. So that was there. I also had an opportunity, a couple of us did, to take a tour with the OTTA with a couple of members. So I was with Ross Jackson, Chris Bailey, and Dave Wilson. And they gave me a tour of Old Town from their perspective, and the amount of information was wonderful. I was able to really kind of step outside of my shoes as a city councilwoman and step into their perspective as far as what they're needing, what they're looking at, what the store owners and more than likely some of the residents are needing and wanting. And so I was very excited to have that opportunity to talk with them today. Mr. Dave Wilson is here today as well. So again, sir, thank you very much for your time, it was really wonderful. I even had an opportunity to go into the Palomar Hotel and take a sneak peek, and that was super cool, because I've never been in there. So if you get a chance, go check it out. The last thing was, we had a ribbon cutting. Handel's Homemade Ice Cream, if you haven't been, my kids went crazy over it. It's all homemade, it was beautiful. The ribbon cutting was great, and so that is down on Margarita Road. And I would urge all of you to go get your fresh ice cream here in Temecula, especially when it gets warm. So thank you.
All right. And I believe I have several slides, so go ahead, throw the first one up. So this Friday night is Temecula Art Night, which is at the Merc. So there's actually a lot between the Merc, if the weather is good, that they set up and sell local art. So it's always a, if you're into art at all, it's a great opportunity to actually support our local artists. Next slide. And Culture Day, Australia, what do you know about Australia? Well, you can find out, and there's actually live reptiles that they're going to have there that you can pet and enjoy from Australia. So that's next Saturday, so a week from this Saturday. That's always a fun, fun day for kids especially. And then I attended the Rock Your Red. It's all about heart disease, heart attacks. It's a local charity by Denise Wilson, who herself had heart surgery and open-heart surgery. So she is very well-connected to this cause, and it was a great event, it was a sellout event. So thank you for all the people who supported this event, and it's really important. And they do programs such as CPR classes for people who want to know how to save someone's life. So a great event. And then I have another one. Okay, so, so we're talking about workforce housing. And if I'm correct, which I think I am, this was something the state of California did not force us to do. We invested $10.2 million of the city's money into this project for low-income housing people, workforce people, whose income ranges from $19,000 to $65,000, rents from just under $500 to $1,500. There are restricted affordable units for 55 years. So the city literally bought down that rent for 55 years at this facility. So this is all part of the rezoning process of Uptown. So because we have no redevelopment agency anymore, which is where we got the money to build low-cost housing, so now we're kind of like in a situation where we have to find money to do this low-cost housing that is basically workforce-related. So, and we are actively searching. We still have a couple of parcels that we can sell and actually convert that, those lots into cash that will be able to do this. But very important, it's a high priority for the city, despite what you might hear. It is something we really take seriously. We are trying to make our workforce housing available to those who need it. So just to let you know. And by the way, when someone says something at the dais that's not on the agenda, we can't respond anyways. So when someone says, why don't you respond, we can't by law. So that's why we sit up here and we don't respond. So that is the... But I'm very proud of this, we have several other in the pipeline, you'll be hearing about those pretty much every city council meeting, exactly what the city is doing, has done, and are continuing to do. So we're going to make that information available to our citizens also. So, all right, with that, we're going to go on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, if you would like, we can go ahead and move up item number 14.
Yes.
As previously discussed, if you would still like to do that based on mayor's prerogative.
I would say so, yes.
Okay, well, in that case, we will go ahead, and we have no public speakers on this particular item. We may have individuals in the audience who would like to provide a presentation. Mr. Mayor and members of the public, the city currently has three vacancies on its Old Town Local Advisory Commission. The vacancies are for the following positions. One landowner within the Old Town specific plan area, one licensed architect, and one Temecula resident at large. These vacancies were advertised and recruited for. The application period was January 1, 2024, through January 31, 2024. The city did receive 10 applications, and those applications were a part of the staff packet, and the applications were redacted. In addition to that, the organizational members of the community have also recommended the following individuals to represent their respective organizations. Brooke Nunn from the Chamber of Commerce, Julie Noe from Old Town Temecula Association, Rebecca Farnback from Temecula Valley Historical Society, and Scott Wilson from Visit Temecula Valley. All these terms will begin March 1, 2024, and they'll run through December 31, 2026. Since there were no applications received for the position of architect, that vacancy with council direction tonight will be recruited for again with the city's annual board committee and commission recruitment process in the fall of this year. So at this time, we are recommending to the city council that it receive any applicant presentations from applicants that happen to be present, appoint the members, and then ratify the full membership list for the committee. As a reminder, each applicant's application packet stands on its own, and while the applicant presentation is not mandatory, it is certainly something that we look forward to receiving. So, Mr. Mayor, unless you and the council have any questions of staff regarding the technical recruitment process, I can begin calling the individuals.
Any questions? No, go ahead.
Okay, so with that, I will go ahead and call up Carlene Anderson. Carlene Anderson, welcome, Ms. Anderson. And Ms. Anderson, you have up to five minutes to go ahead and share anything that was not included in your application packet.
Thank you. I would represent two moderate-to-low-income buildings in Temecula, consisting of about 54 residential units and seven businesses. I let them know that I had been invited here tonight. I sent out a questionnaire about whatever issues that might be on their mind, and I received some good feedback. So if chosen to act on the advisory board, I feel I could provide a nice representation of residents that live here and also ownership of the two buildings. One building is called the Palomar Heritage Building, located at 41955 Fifth Street. Our ground floor tenants are Havana Kitchen and Lafata Cellars. The other one is called the Cameron Historical Building, located at 41925 Fifth Street. And our ground floor tenants are the Spice Merchant, Landeros Mexican Grill, and the Beauty Artisan Salon. So that's it, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Suzette Jacobson is the next individual, I don't believe that she is here. Maximilian Lyons.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to present, and hi, Mayor Stewart. It's good to see you cut my hair a few times.
Right.
As a little kid. My name's Maximilian Lyons. I went to K through 12 out here. I'm applying specifically for the, I think I saw it advertised as like the Old Town Resident Advisor, or just a resident at large for the committee position. I moved back here in 2020 during COVID, when I was completing law school at University of San Diego, and went online, and then I moved back. Wasn't really planning to stick around here, but I started working with Dan Henderson's gym, and just re-fell in love with the city again. And started thinking about, okay, it would be cool to get my foot in the door with the city somehow. And then when I saw this position come up, I thought it was a good opportunity. Moved into the Luke's Building back in August. And I just spent a lot of time in Old Town, just walking around and meeting people, and it seemed like it would be a good fit there. Yeah, and I just would want to, boots on the ground, I love the city. And any way that I could contribute and just help make Temecula the best version, you know, of itself, in any capacity. And like, I have really no experience of city government or much anything like that. I've been kind of doing other things, but it seemed like a good entry-level kind of committee thing to get some experience. And yeah, and so I stopped working for Dan Henderson towards the end of last year, and I started working for, as I think the city is aware, in Chamber of Commerce, for Mrs. Newman. She's got this reality show that she's doing, I'm the marketing producer for that, so I'm getting all the businesses and everybody together that want to be on the show. It's going to be kind of a postcard for Temecula, just everything wanted to be shown in the best light. So I've had the pleasure of connecting with so many business owners around Temecula by doing that. And yeah, and of course, the focus on the show is like the stampede, but it's a Temecula show, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be people's perspective of Temecula, they're watching TV and stuff, so. And I do believe that Temecula, one of the best cities, this side of heaven. And I grew up here, and I love it here, and yeah, and that's pretty much all I wanted to say. Thank you, guys, for all that you do for the community and making this such a great place to live. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, hold on, Max.
Max, Maximilian.
She has a question.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
Well, first off, I love your name. When we were going over this, I was like, that's such a cool name.
Thank you. Took me a minute to grow into it.
I'm sure of it. Question for you, in what ways do you see yourself contributing to this committee?
I tried to find as much information as I could on like what it would entail. Like, I figured it would just be first few meetings, if it was selected, then it would be...
As being an advisory board for Old Town, what does that look like? What do you bring in that, let's say, somebody else that might be coming in here, why should I pick you?
Because I live in Old Town, and I spend a lot of time connecting with just the business owner, and I kind of feel I'm pretty in the loop with just sentiments of things and how, you know, just what's going on, and I've got a lot of friends that frequent Old Town. And I just kind of, whether I... And I just kind of, whether I want to be aware of everything or not, I just kind of am in the, in the loop and stuff. And I just kind of, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Cynthia Palmer. Cynthia Palmer. Okay. Benam Shahduk.
Good evening. How's everyone doing?
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Ben Shahduk. I have been a resident of Temecula since 2017. I live here with my wife and two children. I work for Riverside County as a registered nurse through Riverside University Health Systems. I worked in ETS, and now I'm in quality improvement, the quality improvement department and data management. So my goal would be for Old Town to keep it business-friendly and accessible. I come from New Jersey, and over there, it's a, like, everything is a toll road. Everything's difficult to get to. Parking is difficult. You want to go into the city, pay a toll, pay for parking, kind of, you know, restricts business, makes things, makes things more difficult. So I would hope to keep Temecula and Old Town very accessible, very easy to get to, and kind of contribute in that way. My family spend, me and my family spend a lot of time there. Too much money. So it's a very good city here, and I would hope to just be involved with keeping it that way. I look at some of the other cities and towns out there. So it's a great place, a great place to visit, a great place to raise a family and enjoy yourself. So I would hope to be involved in doing that. And also, I've been a property manager for over 20 years, so I know how to fix things for quickly and with no money. That's usually what property managers get done. I'm a very frugal, inefficient person, simple, direct, and just kind of hope to bring that to the situation. Any questions?
No, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lawrence Slusser, to be followed by Skylar Temple. Okay, Skylar Temple, to be followed by Sabina Yurati.
Hey, everyone. How you doing?
Morning.
It's a great night.
Yes.
I'll lean back a little bit. Voice likes to carry. I've gotten to know y'all for a long time now. You know who I am. But for those who don't know, my name's Skylar Temple. I'm a 25-year resident of the city of Temecula, born and raised here, went to our award-winning public schools. I've been engaged in our community for as long as I can remember. I was, I think, 10 years old when I went to my first public meeting. It was a public traffic safety meeting because I really wanted to crosswalk near Red Hawk Elementary School. Ever since then, I've been desperately involved in our, in our community because I love this community, and I want to give back to the community that made my success possible. So speaking of Old Town, what is so special about Old Town? The transformation of Old Town into our community center for arts, history, culture, entertainment, and also food and beverage is exactly what our community needed, and it's what it still needs to this day. It's what made folks like myself and others in my generation want to stay in Temecula. Growing up in Temecula doesn't mean you stay, but we found a reason to stay. The family-friendly community, the arts and entertainment, food and beverage, the lively scene that Old Town, the promenade, and other parts of Temecula and our region have created made it the place to live in Southern California. And with mixed-use development enabling housing, shopping, and entertainment within a single block, we are well on track to continue to build Riverside County's premier downtown district. So why should you select me for appointment to the Old Town Local Advisory Committee? Well, first off, it's all local, right? I believe it's important that demographics from all walks of life are represented on this committee. And I think a vastly underrepresented demographic, in government in general, but especially here, is the mid-20s bracket, right? These are the number-one patrons of Old Town Temecula. Having grown up here, I think I can recognize the importance of striking that balance between the family-friendly Old Town and the thriving downtown district. I remember fondly riding my bike with my family down to get ice cream in the afternoon, and then being able to go and have, have dinner. And I think we can find that balance between the family-friendly community and the thriving downtown district. I know these things feel like they're at odds right now, but they shouldn't be, and they won't be. Because I think with the incredible team that's being built here for the Old Town Local Advisory Committee, we can make everything possible here in Old Town. I'm available for any questions or comments you may have. Thank you.
Questions? Nope. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sabina Yurati.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. My name is Sabina Yurati, and I am a resident of the Cameron Historical Building here in Old Town. I'm also a longtime resident of this valley. My father's a retired Marine, and we moved so frequently until we moved here. It has been my only steady home for the last 10 years. My family has laid down our roots in this valley. My husband works for the Riverside Sheriff's Department, and we've dedicated ourselves to our community and to building our family here. I love my city and its people and strive to be an advocate for them. Old Town Temecula is a wonderful place to live. It really is. We were blessed to find our apartment and to work with Carlene, who's also applied as the owner of the Cameron Historical Building. My drive in applying for this committee really lays in the desire to better the life for not only residents, but employees, business owners, and patrons of Old Town Temecula. I feel like this is such a lovely Old Town area to have and such a benefit to this city, and I feel like we can strike the right balance for everyone down here. My biggest concerns are mostly parking for residents. I also have concerns around drunk driving in our Old Town area. We were personally victims of it, where our truck was parked overnight on the street and was hit by a drunk driver over Labor Day weekend. It also affects employees. Many, I used to be an employee at Public House. Many of my fellow employees had to Uber to work or pay up to $70 to park, more weekends than not, unfortunately, especially on busy weekends. I'm a member of Gen Z. I'm only 25 years old. But I want to be an advocate for my community and the next generation of Temeculans as a whole. I believe my experience as a resident and employee of Old Town brings a distinct point of view to this council. Temecula has long held a reputation for being safe, fun, and family-friendly. I have built my life and community in this city and want to be a part of keeping Temecula and Old Town Temecula a wonderful community. Any questions?
You're good?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No? Okay, we're good.
Thank you. And then Mr. Mark Winkler did withdraw, so the last person, if he is here, is Dave Wilson.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name's Dave Wilson, resident of Temecula since 1991, private homeowner in District 2 since 2004, founder and owner of a tour and event company established in 1993 with an office in the same location since 1996 overlooking the corner of 6th and Old Town, Front Street. I am interested in serving on the advisory committee, public safety, traffic circulation, and the enhancement and preservation of a visitor-friendly Old Town atmosphere as my priorities. I live five minutes away, and due to the nature of my business, you'll see me in Old Town various times, day and night, seven days a week. I provide Old Town perspective that is informed, engaged, and current. My immersive involvement in the historic community, Old Town Temecula day-to-day dynamics, and professional marketing and coordination of regional, national, international tourism activities require me to consider Old Town from a variety of perspectives for a variety of needs under many different circumstances. I physically walk the six blocks, archway to archway, numerous times in a given week, communicating with local residents, Old Town merchants, property owners, regional visitors, national, international tourists, and public sector staff, providing insight from a cross-section of people living, working in, and visiting Old Town. I hear about perceptions, suggestions, concerns, and successes during my interactions. Certain days, I drive in and out of Old Town numerous times while facilitating our wine country tours and events. Thus, I am intimately aware of traffic flow and resultant issues. I'm an independent thinker. Common sense, logic, reading, research, peer discussion, professional feedback, and history provide, guide my decisions. My agenda is simple. Consider the best interests of our community, balancing the realities and responsibilities of our growing valley as it matures with special consideration given to respecting and protecting our incredibly important historic legacy. I'm very fortunate to have had iconic Valley figures who are mentors, which creates a sense of personal responsibility to ensure connections to our past are recognized, preserved, and celebrated. I would chat with Tony Tobin at the tiny private museum he created in a small retail space on Main Street in the building right next to what is now the Public House. Audrey and Vince Solerzo were always so supportive of my efforts, sharing the fascinating Solerzo story with every one of my guests as Audrey toured them through the winery. Bill Harker, whose wife Evelyn founded the Blue and Wine Festival, would share anecdotes about his early Valley escapades and leadership of the Temecula Town Association. These regular interactions inspired my curiosity, fascination, and respect for the historical significance of this valley and Southern California's development over the last two centuries. How do we balance Old Town growth, development, and inevitable change with the critical importance of respecting and protecting this area's rich history? I want to help facilitate this. I assist at the Vail Headquarters with hands-on, interactive tours for our third-grade students studying local history. I see firsthand the fascination, curiosity, and surprise as an appreciation for our significant history is sparked, reinforcing to me the importance of fiercely protecting the touchstones of our past. Old Town decisions, seemingly mutually exclusive, need to be made with at least a passing consideration to ensure awareness of possible impacts upon divergent Valley interests, including the Pachanga, wine country, and our recently-named National Historic Landmark, the Vail Headquarters, and National Historic Trail, the Butterfield Overland Mail, a portion of which actually followed what is today Old Town Front Street. My involvement in these varied endeavors will be an asset to this committee. I am a perpetual student of tourism psychology, fascinated by the important attributes that make a lasting impression in the subconscious of visitors. I happened upon an article in a Midwest newspaper describing how many communities across the country struggling financially are trying to find ways to attract tourism through, or attract revenues through tourism by getting visitors. The takeaway was tourists seek and appreciate new and unique experiences, especially when authentic to a specific region or community. Particularly important to formulating indelible memories is a visitor feeling connected with the heart and soul of an area, in our case, Old Town. What makes Old Town Temecula different from any place else in the world? Besides our historic structures, the remaining undisturbed open space and riparian habitat in and surrounding Old Town are examples of tangible, easily overlooked, distinct Valley features. This is what must be identified, respected, and protected, ensuring tourists leave our area with a unique sense of place, or, as I also say, with a taste of the essence of our place. We are all aware tourism has become and will continue to grow as economic pillar. There are 20 million residents, and three of the top tourist convention destinations in the world, San Diego, Anaheim, and Palm Springs surrounding us within a 90-minute radius.
Mr. Wilson, thank you.
Selected, I embrace a civic opportunity to ensure equitable, reasoned outcomes for the district and our community as a whole. Thank you.
So that is all of the applicants. And at this time, Mr. Mayor, if you would like to go ahead, given that there are no questions, if, at this time, you would like to facilitate a name from each of your council colleagues, one for landowner and one for general resident, that we will take due diligent notes here. I do have a slide that may help you. Jonathan, if we can go ahead and... So again, we can take one motion at the end and to approve all of that. But for right now, we'll ask for one landowner within Old Town specific plan area from each of you and one Temecula resident-at-large.
Okay. All right. Let's start with Ms. Jessica over here. Yes, one of each.
Okay. For the landowner, I would like to choose, what's the name? Carlene Anderson. Am I saying that right? And for the at-large, so we're, okay, just pause for a second. Are we not doing the architect part?
No.
Because we did not receive any applications for the architect, we will be re-recruiting for the architect position with the annual recruitment process in the fall.
Okay, so anybody who's not a resident in that area, we are not picking them. Is that what I'm hearing? Because you're saying from a resident standpoint of view?
It could be any of the other applicants. We did not receive any architect applications. So by default, the rest, your secondary name will be for the resident-at-large position.
They have to be a resident. Is that what I'm asking?
Yes, they have to be a resident of Temecula. Yes.
Okay. Because my architect person was Dave Wilson, my at-large was Sabrina. Does that make sense?
And I...
I apologize. I just, this was last minute for me for a change because we were picking three for my last meeting when I was sat with you guys. So this was a little bit of a change.
Okay, so Mr. Wilson is not an architect that I am aware of.
All right. So in that sense, I'll pick Dave Wilson then. In that...
Okay. In that residential spot.
Okay.
Mr. Schwank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, first of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone that submitted an application. It's always a tough choice when we do this. For the property owner, I think Carlene Anderson is going to do a wonderful job, and I'm looking forward to working with you. With respect to the licensed architect, I'd like to make a recommendation when we go back out that we also include architects that maybe have a business in Temecula. If we struggle to find someone that lives in Temecula, this architect that wants to do it, they have a business here, I think I'd be okay with that if my colleagues are as well. I think that's something that we could open up the pool a little bit on that. And then, okay, with respect for the Temecula resident-at-large, it's, it was no, no surprise that, you know, I advocated for someone that actually lived in Old Town. I think it's important that folks that live in Old Town are represented on this. And I said that when we formed this. And while all the applicants were well-deserving, I believe that Sabina Yurati, she was the one that really rose above everyone in this role. And she lives in Old Town, she works in Old Town. And I think she's going to add a wonderful, younger, diverse voice to that committee. So that is my choice.
Thank you.
Who did you choose for?
Sabina.
Sabina. Okay. All right. Mayor Protem.
For the landowner, I will also choose Carlene Anderson. And for the resident, I will also choose Sabina.
And I am in favor of Carlene and Sabina, right?
Sabina.
Sabina. Yes.
Okay. So if we can go ahead and put the slide back up, please. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, what staff is looking for is a motion to go ahead and appoint Carlene Anderson as the landowner within the Old Town-specific plan area, to go ahead and appoint Sabina URT as the Temecula resident-at-large, to go ahead and reauthorize or reauthorize the recruitment of the licensed architect as a part of the annual recruitment process, and we will definitely be searching for an architect that either resides in Temecula or has a business in Temecula. And we are also looking to go ahead and ratify that list of organizational appointments where Brookna and Chamber of Commerce, Julie No, Old Town Temecula Association, Rebecca Farnback, Temecula Valley Historic Society, and Scott Wilson visit Temecula Valley, and staff is looking for one motion to approve all of that.
Second.
Okay. And if you'll give me just a moment here. Invoting is open. And it passes unanimously.
Right. So, now we're off the consent calendar, correct? All right. So, number one is waive reading of title and text of all ordinance and resolutions, including in the agenda. Number two, approve action minutes of February 13th, 2024. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve resolution to adopt the Urban Forest Management Plan and make a finding its exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section 15307 and 15061. Number five, award construction contract to ACE Capital Engineering for the American with Disabilities Act's Transition Plan Implement... I can't even say it. Project PW-1816. Number six, approve an increase to the contingency amount for the playground equipment enhancement and safety surfacing at Calais-Aragon Park. Number seven is approve plans and specifications and authorize the solicitation of construction bids for pickleball courts, PW-21-03. I'd like to pull item number seven for a... We can vote on it, we can... But I would like to highlight this project. So, can I get a motion?
I'll move consent.
All right. All right. So, give us a staff report on just what we voted for.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Samantha Preciado from the Public Works Department. She's our project manager on the pickleball court project, and she is going to give you a preview of what this new fantastic facility is going to be.
Thank you, Pat. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am here to present on item number seven for the approval of plan specifications and authorization to solicit construction bids for the long-awaited pickleball courts. So, at the start of this project, staff looked at all city parks within Temecula to see which location would be best to house this facility. Some of the main criteria we've looked for was if the site had restrooms, parking, and open space. From this process, a community park was originally selected. However, staff learned that due to noise and traffic concerns, a community park may not have been the best location for this facility. So, staff circled back, which led us to our current location, which is also known as the pit at Ronald Reagan Sports Park. This site currently houses a soccer field, and it is at the intersection of Pabba and Margarita Road. The site has many existing features that make it an ideal location for this facility, one of them being that there are four existing Musco LED lights, which we will reuse and re-aim specifically for the pickleball courts. Since it is a soccer field, it is a relatively flat site, which is ideal for our courts. And as the name suggests, it's within a pit, therefore it helps mitigate challenges with noise and wind. So, with all of these great features that the site already provides, staff was able to incorporate more of the public wants, which we received from subcommittee meetings that were held, and through these meetings, we learned that more is better. With the money being saved from the utilities that are already existing from the side of amenity and the help of subcommittee and council to increase our budget, staff was able to expand our scope from 12 courts up to 17 courts, which leads us to what we have today. So, our pickleball facility will have 17 dedicated pickleball courts, which will meet competitive play requirements per the USA Pickleball Standards. 16 of these courts will be standard size, and one will be an ADA, which you could see in the middle left-hand corner. The courts will be enclosed by a 10-foot-high chain-link fence with windscreen along the perimeter, and on the interior, there will be a 42-inch-high chain-link fence with gates to help minimize balls going into other courts. The facility will also include a centralized staging area, which you could see right to the right of the ADA championship court, and there will... It will have concrete tables, bleachers, and a shade structure. There will be portable restrooms and hand-washing stations just outside of the perimeter fencing, and the facility will include gravel lots, which will... On the eastern and western side, that have 119 parking stalls and five ADA stalls, we are also requesting additive bids to provide us... So that the bidder provides us with estimates to replace these gravel lots with AC lots. So, if we can afford it, we will be replacing those. And as mentioned before, the existing Musco lights will be re-aimed for this project. We will also be installing two push buttons on each side of the entrances, and we will install solar lights at the parking areas. So, if approved tonight, we will put this out to bid and begin construction as soon as soccer season ends in June, and construction will take approximately four months, so we should have... Be able to play in the holidays. Any questions?
Any questions?
No questions, just brief comment.
Sure.
Thank you for the report. I appreciate that. And this was... I'm glad you pulled it because this was something that we've been talking about for quite a while and didn't want it to just sort of pass on consent. So, sort of day like that, that we're actually doing this. This has been a long process, a lot of feedback, and I'm talking about a lot of feedback from the pickleball people. I hope the pickleball folks enjoy this as well as the balance of the community. I think it's going to be a great amenity for our city, and I'm really excited to see it open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I'm super excited about it, too. I play, but not very good. And... But more importantly, I enjoy the fact that we got enough parking. I mean, 119 spots for 17 courts. That's really, really good. So... And the fact that it's a tournament facility, too, puts us at a totally different level. I don't know of any other cities who have a tournament facility in pickleball. So, this will be kind of like a first-level premier pickleball complex. So, thank you for all the hard work you guys have done on this, and we're super excited to enjoy pickleball. So, thank you. All right. So, now I'm going to adjourn the city council meeting and go to Community Services.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. I'll call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, please note that we are all still present. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, we'll go ahead and move to our consent calendar, which we have one item. Item number eight, approve action minutes of February 13th, 2024. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move to second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Let us vote. All right, and that passes 4-0. Thank you, everyone. We'll now move to our Community Services Director Report. Good evening.
Good evening. Nothing for me this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. General Manager, anything?
Nothing further.
All right. Board of Directors, anything? All right, seeing none, hearing none, we'll move to adjourn this meeting and back to our city council meeting.
I will come back with the Temecula Public Financing Authority. Please note we're all still here. So, do we have any public comments? Okay. So, the consent calendar is all we have, which is number nine, approve joint action minutes of February 13th, 2024.
Move consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. All right, that passes 4-0. So, now we're off to the public hearing. So, may I have a staff report?
Certainly, that's me tonight. So, tonight, you will consider the formation of a Community Facilities District for the Prado Development, and we have Jim Fabian from Fieldman, Rollup, and Associates. He's our municipal advisor on the formation of CFD, so he'll walk you through the presentation tonight, and then we'll have some procedural steps to follow afterwards.
Thanks, Jennifer. Mayor, members of City Council, pleasure to be here tonight. As Jennifer mentioned, we're here tonight to do a public hearing related to the approval of the Prado CFD 23-02. On this slide, you'll see the location of the Prado Development right off I-15. This project was approved by the Planning Commission in 2022. The CFD boundary map that is shown in the blue there was approved by the City Council on January 23rd of 2024 and then recorded with the county on February 7th, 2024. This project will include 237 units, single-family homes. You might recall, this was originally set up to be a for-rent type of project, but they subsequently changed it to a for-sale project. As Jennifer mentioned on the agenda tonight, item number 10, we are here to conduct the public hearing. We'll have three resolutions for your consideration. We'll actually have the City Clerk conduct the election. Assuming favorable results, we'll then adopt the resolution declaring the results of the special election and then have the first reading of the ordinance of the levying of the special tax. Just a little bit of background on Community Facilities Districts, as we discussed at our last meeting related to heirloom farms. This is a financing mechanism where the property owner actually decides to levy a tax against themselves. It's not a city-imposed tax. The property owner in this case will have a ballot. The ballots will open. They will then decide to vote for levying of the special tax against their property. The taxes, special taxes that are levied, will be used to finance improvements or pay debt service on bonds or services related to the development. This project, the CFD, started back in November of 2023, when the authority approved the deposit reimbursement agreement, which funded the cost to form the CFD. No city funds were used for the formation of the CFD. The firms involved are listed on this slide here. The CFD will be used to finance facilities and fees, also facilities and fees associated with other external agencies, the Eastern Municipal Water District. We also have the Temecula Valley USD, also potentially Rancho California Water District. In addition to the facilities and fees, there will also be a funding for municipal services. As you might remember, every new development where there's a change in land use, there's a fiscal impact analysis done by the city. This was one of those projects. It was determined that there would be fees or costs associated with this development that wasn't already in the budget, so we have included a public safety component to the services, and then also a maintenance component for public works and parks that will be paid by the future residents of the CFD. Also, there is a small portion of the Harveston CFD that was levied on this property that will be paid off from the proceeds of the special taxes for this CFD. Previously, on January 23rd, we were in front of you for the resolution of intention to establish the CFD and to incur bonded indebtedness. That set the time and place of tonight's public hearing for February 27th. Also, at that time, the city adopted the Joint Community Facilities Agreement for the fee... The actual improvements that will be city-type of improvements with the authority. Tonight, as I mentioned, item number 10, we have the call for the public hearing and the confirming of no protest. We'll conduct the public hearing, then we'll consider the three resolutions that I mentioned before, which will establish the Community Facilities District and then set up the election. Then, after that, we'll conduct the election... Excuse me. Conduct the special election, and then assuming the favorable results, we'll have the resolution adopted confirming the election, and then the first reading of the special tax ordinance. We will also come back at the next meeting for the second reading of the special tax ordinance. It probably will not be until sometime in 2025 or 2026 that we would come back and actually look for approval of special tax bonds for this project. We'll want to see the project underway, homes built, residents in there, just like we have with the heirloom farm CFD that was approved at the last meeting where we have basically half of the project built, owner occupied. We'll wait for that to happen on this project before we come back for approval of any bonds associated with this. So, tonight's action is just to form the CFD. So, with that, that's my presentation, then we're going to move into the procedural issues with the public hearing. Any questions?
Yeah, just one quick question. If you could go back to the slide where it talks about the improvements and what the CFD will be used for?
Yes. Hold on one second.
Thanks. All right, so this is important, I think, for the community to see, and for us as well. I mean, like, street improvements, the Waverly traffic signal was huge. That's been a big issue for a while. And I apologize in advance for not asking this question earlier today, but how does the prepayment of the other Harveston CFD affect those current Harveston residents? Will they see a decrease in their CFD? How does that work?
No, it would simply be to reduce the amount of outstanding bonds, so no one else would be impacted other than the property that is within the CFD.
Okay.
What... Why we're on this slide, one thing I should mention, too, is that this project also has a community benefit payment because of your growth management policies that will be paid to the city for infrastructure, too.
Okay. That's all.
I have a similar comment because I don't think I got the answer that I was looking for. So, are you saying that the Harveston bond that's being paid off was attached to this property, and that's why they're paying it off?
Well... Well, what happened, when Harveston was formed, it was a larger area that included a portion of this project.
Okay.
So, there's a lien for the Harveston CFD that's on this property.
Okay.
This... The proceeds from the special taxes for this CFD will be used to prepay the Harveston bonds.
Okay.
And so, what will happen, there'll be a prorata reduction by the amount of the lien, and I'm sorry, I don't know the precise number of what that lien is. I think it's, you know, it's under $100,000. But that money would be then used to prepay the lien. There would be a prorata reduction of the outstanding bonds associated with the Harveston CFD.
So, their CFD payments will not be affected? I mean, go down?
Not because it... Everybody's... What happens is that this property solely pays for its share. Everybody else pays for its share.
Oh, got it.
So, there won't be any impact on the existing residents of Harveston.
Okay, got it. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. So... Miss City Clerk?
Yes.
Next step, please.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, the city has not received any written or email protests from any owners of property in the district or registered voters who reside in the district who wish to protest against the formation of the district, the special tax levy, or the proposed bond issue for the district. You are welcome to open the public hearing in this Board of Directors proceeding for Community Facilities District 23-02 to inquire into the formation of the district, the levy of the special taxes on the property in the district, and the need to incur bonded indebtedness for the district.
I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any public speakers?
Mr. Mayor, there are no public comments, so you are welcome to close the public hearing.
And I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, the Board of Directors is now welcome to consider adoption of the following resolutions. A resolution of the Board of Directors of the Temecula Public Financing Authority, a formation of Temecula Public Financing Authority, CFD number 23-02 Prado, authorizing the levy of a special tax within the district, and preliminarily establishing an appropriations limit for the district, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Temecula Public Financing Authority determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness of the Temecula Public Financing Authority, CFD number 23-02 Prado, and lastly, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Temecula Public Financing Authority calling a special election within CFD number 23-02.
All right. So, I'm looking for a motion.
Move to approval.
It's been seconded.
And if you'll hold for just a second. Please vote. Mr. Mayor, that passes unanimously. And at this time, I will now open the ballot submitted by the owner of the property in the CFD and announce the results of the election. There's only one ballot, sir. Mr. Mayor, the ballot is in favor, and the results of the election being in favor of the levy of the special taxes, the establishment of the appropriations limit, and the incurring of the bonded indebtedness for the district, you may now proceed with the final actions for the Community Facilities District and adopt the following resolution and introduce the following ordinance. A resolution of the Board of Directors of the Temecula Public Financing Authority declaring results of the special election and directing recording of notice of special tax lien, CFD number 23-02 Prado. number 23-02 Prado, and introduce an ordinance of the Temecula Public Financing Authority levying special taxes within Temecula Public Financing Authority, CFD 23-02 Prado.
All right. Is that all we got for that?
Yes, I will need a motion for those two items.
Oh, got it.
We can get a single motion?
Second.
Motion second, please vote. All right, that passes 4-0.
It does, Mr. Mayor, and that concludes the item.
All right, so do we have an executive director report?
Nothing further.
Okay, anything from the board of directors?
Nothing.
We'll adjourn that meeting and reconvene this Temecula City Council meeting. We have another public hearing, number 11, approve proposal fiscal year 2024-2025 user fee schedule. May I have a staff report, please?
Certainly, that is me again. So good evening, mayor and council members. Tonight's public hearing is to consider the adoption of an updated user fee study and corresponding fee schedule related to the development-related user fees imposed by the city. I will provide a brief, a brief background on the user fee study and then turn the presentation over to our consultant Chad Wolford, who will present the methodology used in the creation of the study and the final results. The user fee study focused on the development-related fees charged by the building and safety, planning, land development, fire prevention, and police departments. The end result of the study was to calculate the full cost of services provided for each individual fee. The city contracted with Wolford Consulting to conduct the study, and he worked diligently with city staff over several years to first develop a full cost plan, which was used to calculate all indirect costs incorporated into the user fee study. The city's current fees are based on a user fee study adopted in 2005. Since that time, annual inflationary adjustments have escalated the fees in accordance with the Consumer Price Index. The cumulative CPI adjustments total 70% since 2005. However, the city's budget has increased significantly more than the CPI due to the addition of new programs, state mandated requirements, and overall cost escalation. User fee revenue has decreased since 2005 despite the inflationary escalation due mainly to lower building activity, which peaked back in 2005, '06 timeframe. This year's projected subsidy for the user fee activity is just over $4 million, which comes from other sources of general fund revenue. The typical timeline to update a cost plan and user fee study is every three to five years. And while an updated plan was completed back in 2010, the results were not implemented due to the economic impacts from the Great Recession. Staff began the proposed update to the cost allocation plan and user fee study in 2014 and experienced many delays along the way due to the program, the programmatic redesign of the fees, changeover in staff, as well as COVID. The proposed study greatly simplifies the building and safety fee matrix, reducing the total number of fees and creates a more user-friendly fee schedule, which helps developers calculate their own fees without requiring staff assistance. The adoption and implementation of the proposed user, user fee schedule is governed by state law and requires specific notifications be provided to interested parties. As such, the city provided notice and the proposed fee schedule to the utility companies and the Building Industry Association in advance of tonight's public hearing. To date, staff has received no questions or expressed opposition from this outreach. The proposed fee study was also presented to the council's Strategic Fiscal Services Ad Hoc Subcommittee in both October and January. I'll now turn the presentation over to our consultant Chad Wolford, who will walk you through the development of the user fee study, discuss its methodology, and present the results of the study.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of the details behind how we came up with this study. My purpose today is, or tonight, is to share with you some of the methodology and the approach that we went through that hopefully answers some questions you may have about that, hopefully builds some credibility in the study so the numbers you see, you understand where they came from and understand the effort that went behind it and all of the quality control that went into it so that you have a lot of confidence in what you've been presented by staff in the ultimate proposals for recommended fees. I have a series of slides here. I'm not going to go through every single one of them line by line. I'm going to highlight some things for you and share some comments about those. And I'll be available, of course, to answer any questions that you might have as we're going through as well as at the end of my comments. First of all, I wanted to share a little bit of my background. There's a slide there that mentions a lot about me, but two things I think really stand out. One is I've been doing these kinds of studies for over 26 years now. And as a matter of fact, the 20-something or 20-year-old study that was done for you was me back then. I worked for a different firm at the time, but that was me. And so this time around, I'm doing the same basic, basic approach, but I have 20 years more experience and a few more gray hairs and technology advantages and lots of different information to do it. So generally, the methodology is the same, but of course, I believe the results are much, much better because we've had lots of time to improve everything about what we do. So the, the thing that, if, we'll just skip to a couple more. The approach that, well, here's some ideas about what we went through. In addition to doing the cost analysis, this was an opportunity, as Jennifer mentioned, to simplify fees, make them better from a customer service perspective, from an implementation perspective, and just make things easier and better to administrate as we go through. One thing that you won't find in my report was any information or discussion about whether the departments are doing an efficient job, an effective job. It was really all about what does it cost for them to do the services that they're doing? And so the entire methodology was built around that. That doesn't equal that. The summary of the study, of the methodology, this is really kind of a business case approach. If you own a business or you operate a business and you try to figure out what it costs you to provide your services, you'll go through a methodology very similar to this. How long does staff take to do it? What are my costs associated with it? All those unit costs we built into it as opposed to what I'll term a tax or revenue goal approach, which is simply to say, we want X dollars, so let's make all the fees add up to those X dollars. That's kind of backing into these. Instead, what we did is we built up the cost for each service so we could identify that. And I'll talk about the, the specific details about that in just a moment. The key thing about it, though, is because we did that, all of the costs, and I'm using, I tend to use the term cost and fee interchangeably. The cost is what the study showed, the fees are ultimately what you're going to be asked to approve. You know, I don't know what those would be during the study, so kind of think of those interchangeably here, assuming the fees are ultimately somehow based on the cost. That those costs and those fees relate to staff effort so that the costs and the fees will vary based upon the size or complexity of whatever the service is. If it's a building, it's the size and complexity of the building. If it's some sort of a, another service that's being provided, it's the time and effort for that. So they're all sort of variable on that basis. Even if they're flat fees, we established them and created ranges and categories so that they really matched up with that staff effort. So the methodology is really, really simple in concept. The details behind it are what make it difficult, probably just like everything in life, but we identify what the cost of a position is. This would be the salaries and benefits. This would be their services supply expenditures. This might be overhead added to it, but the cost of a position divided by their billable hours or their productive hours gives us an hourly rate so that when we apply that rate, it recovers the cost of all those things. So once we have that hourly rate, and of course, I'm simplifying it dramatically here, we can then multiply that hourly rate by how long it takes to do any particular service. So that hourly rate times the hours to do the service gives us our cost. Again, really, really simple in concept. The details of what is the cost of that position, what are those hours, you know, what are the productive hours? All those are very important details that took a lot of time and effort to calculate. So this is what it looked like. If you can see this, this worksheet, this is a very truncated version of what the software is and what we went through. So this is a hypothetical fee number one, if you will, and we look at each position associated with it. So if this is a building inspector, we would do this for every fee a building inspector is looking at. If it's a fire inspector or a plan checker, same exact approach. So under fee number one, we have intake, half an hour at $100 an hour. That gives us $50 of cost for that, that activity. There's documentation review, there's inspection, there's filing. Each of them has a different time value for it. We went through that for every single fee and every single position. So there are approximately 900 fees and there are multiple, multiple positions within, within each department. So we did this exact approach thousands of times. And we did it, again, for every single fee as well as non-fee activities. This is not just, it's a cost of service study, so we didn't just look at fee activities, we looked at non-fee activities, whether there are services you provided that you choose not to charge a fee or things you just never would, but we wanted to take a very comprehensive view of everything for a couple of reasons. One is we wanted to account for all the staff time. So it wasn't all just loaded on fee stuff. It was loaded on everything they did. And when we spread overhead, when we spread service and supply expenditures, when we spread all those, it got spread not just over fee activities and concentrated it on fees, it got spread over everything. And that way, it's the most fair and most appropriate and most reasonable approach to do that. So looking at this, this slide, you know, if there was four hours of time and it was $100 an hour ultimately, that's a $400 cost for this. And other costs might be added on, another $100, let's call it for some overhead or something like that. And then the total cost is $500. If your current fee is only $300, there's a $200 subsidy. So we did that analysis on every single fee. So in the ultimate results that you would see in, ultimately attached to the report, we showed every single fee, the cost of it and the subsidy and the percent subsidy. I keep saying subsidy, but there were occasions when the cost was less than the current fee, so there was actually a surplus. Those are very much in the minority. Some of them broke even, but the vast majority, 76%ish, were under recovering that cost. And so there is a subsidy provided by other funds to that fee pair. So we identified that in every case. When you saw some summary results, big dollar figures for annual amounts, what we did is we took the annual number of each of those fees and multiplied by those same results. And that gave us an extrapolated version of our projected version of what the revenue would look like under the current fee versus what the cost is. So we could see that overall. In this example, we're seeing a $2,000 subsidy. In the, in the results that you saw, it was 7 point something million dollars ultimately when we looked at it overall. So I mentioned costs that go in here. We looked at really every city cost that was appropriate to go into these fees. So of course, there were salaries and benefits for the employees. There were budgeted services and supply expenditures. And in each case, for the services applies, every single line item expenditure, we reviewed every single line item expenditure and identified whether it should be spread generally. And when we spread it generally, it was basically along with where the staff time went. So if 10% of staff time was in a particular fee, it got 10% of electricity or pencils or paper, that kind of thing. But for some items, they were not appropriate to spread generally, so we assigned them specifically to a particular fee or particular collection of fees. And in, in some instances, there were line item expenditures that are not appropriate to spread in any fees. They were things that were not fee-related or they were, there were some compelling reason to exclude them. So we went through every single line item in the study, and if you, you've, you've looked at budgets, there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of those, and we went through every single one of them and made sure that we treated them all appropriately, correctly, reasonably, whichever term you like for that. We just made sure we did it right in every single case. The supervision and support was internal staff. There's obviously where you've got plan checkers, you also have managers that oversee that. So we made sure we identified the cost of that overhead. Internal support activities, if there was time spent towards providing training or something like that, we, that's built in there. So you're getting the sense here, we, we really tried to cover everything in here that was appropriate so that these are true representations of the city's cost for providing whatever service it happened to be. And that service became a cost and became a fee potentially. There's, could you go back? There's one particular area that sometimes is a little bit, not confusing, but causes some consternation, is citywide administration. So how do we capture that? How do we capture the cost of HR and finance department and city attorney and that kind of stuff, right? So those are costs that are identified and spread throughout the city according to a plan called a cost allocation plan. That's a, that's kind of a term for a federal plan. It's really just a, a distribution study that we do that identifies the cost of all those different departments, let's say for finance, for example. What we did is we, and I did that study as well prior to kind of right at the beginning of this overall study, we took finance and broke it into all the different functions, the key functions that finance does. Payroll, accounts receivable, accounts payable, budgeting treasury, et cetera, right? There's probably 15 or 20 different activities. And we identified staff time to each of those activities, spread costs, just like I talked about for the fee study, spread costs to that function. And then we took each of those individual functions and distributed them to the departments and funds and divisions based upon some measure of allocation, some allocation basis. So accounts payable would be what are the actual accounts payable transactions? And we would create ratios based upon those statistics and spread the cost of accounts payable to police and fire and public works and, you know, everybody along that sort of same approach. So we did that for, there was 30 or 40 different allocation bases we used. There was probably 70 or 80 different functions. And so we broke it down to a really granular level and then allocated out to make sure that we, and by the way, this follows kind of federal guidelines to do this because they use that to allocate cost of federal funds and road funds and so forth. But we use it for a fee study as well, just to identify the best way to spread that internal administrative, kind of citywide administrative cost down to the departments and included that cost in the fees as well as a overhead item in there as well. And it was spread along the same lines in the fee study, as I mentioned, for all the other line items. So it kind of followed all of that, that mix of everything, just kind of getting spread around along the best way we could find out. So I mentioned all these things that we did, and the question could be is, how do you know you did it right? Right? That's a lot of stuff. I'm talking about thousands of calculations. A, you know, software does it. When I started this, it wasn't always software does it. I don't have as many gray hairs as perhaps my age should indicate, but we have a series of methods that we go through, and these aren't all one step. These are basically baked into every single phase and every single step that we go through. And I have them listed up here, but essentially, we made sure that we brought in the key experienced staff to help us identify the time data and the annual volume of activity and just all that data that goes in. In fact, all the data came from either key city staff or city finance documents or reports from some city system. So all of that came from real data that we were able to collect through this. And so that's kind of the first part, make sure we have the right source for all the data, make sure we have the right people in the room. And of course, my role is to review everything that comes in and see if it fits normal patterns over, you know, my years of experience or what I typically see or what I expect to see. And that becomes a process of challenging and questioning, this doesn't look right to me, can you explain it? You know, we kind of went through that process in every single case as we went through this. The software itself has balances. So I mentioned about the productive hours. I call them billable hours in the sense of what we're doing here. Let's say the position has 1,500 available hours. We made sure in the study, that's what they spent. That's, that's how much time we used up in the study. If there was an exception to that, we had explanations for it. The workload is too great, we can't get it all done. Okay, that would explain why it goes over a little bit. So the, the models actually have alerts that pop up if things don't balance, and it's part of our process to really drill down on that in every case and go through that. And then we also looked ultimately, as I mentioned, I, I review all this stuff. It's an ongoing process. We have a lot of meetings that we go to to hash all this out. And we also look at, see if our projections are kind of fitting what we have seen historically. If we're projecting a certain amount of revenue on current fees as part of our analysis, we want to see is, has it kind of been in that range over the last few years? That kind of historical perspective we look at it. So going through this and coming up with the results, everything passed all that mustard. That's what we went through to get all of this really done. So as I mentioned, ultimately, we summarize those individual results by annualizing all of those individual fee activities. And the results are what are in the, the report tables and everything. And ultimately, what we identified is that the full cost of just the fee-related services, I'm not even including the non-fee services now, was about 15.8 million dollars. That's the cost of all those services. Projecting using the same annual volume of activity, the current fees would bring in about 7.9 million dollars. So you can see there, those two numbers are fairly different. Only about 50% of the cost was going to be recovered by the current fees at the time of the study. That doesn't affect, you know, what, or doesn't reflect what the, what staff is now recommending for proposed fees. This is at the time of the study. That was the gap. Only 50% of the cost was, was, was projected to recover and historically kind of the same thing. And, yes. And those costs, that's everything I've said. And those costs, that's everything I've said up to this point in terms of what's included in there and all that. That's all built into there, all this overhead and everything is all built into those costs. Ultimately, what we need to look at, the way I look at this going forward, when we have those results and we kind of compare those, what the cost is versus what the current fee is, the cost exists. Whether you charge it or not, the cost exists. That's what we've calculated here. And so if the fee doesn't recover it, then that cost is not recovered by fees. I'm being redundant. That means it has to come from somewhere else. You're not not paying people because the fee payers are paying it, right? You're not paying your utility bills. That subsidy has to be covered from something else. It could be general fund, there could be some other resources that you use. But ultimately, taxpayers are paying that fee if the fee payer is not paying the fee. And I mention that only because very often in these kind of meetings, I hear comments about, well, you're raising taxes. Well, these are not the taxes. These are actually offsets to taxes. These are making the individuals who are, who are receiving some kind of private benefit, and I know in fee cases, they don't always want to receive that private benefit, but they do receive that private benefit from some development activity that requires a review because of state law or whatever. The city has to provide that service. And if they're not paying that fee, someone else is paying it on their behalf. So I just want to, I like to clarify that just to keep it distinct. Maybe not for you, but perhaps for some others who may, you know, have comments and have concerns about those issues. So to summarize the fee results. One more, please. So the current overall subsidy is about seven point nine million dollars. So that, that is potentially offset by whatever proposed increases might exist in the staff report. And the overall cost recovery is about fifty percent, as I mentioned. By tally, seventy-six percent, I referenced this before, seventy-six percent of all the individual fees are being under recovered. So that's just counting all that eight hundred and something of them, eight hundred and eighty, something like that. Seventy-six percent of them are under recovering. So the rest of them were either over recovering or were break even. And I don't have a breakdown between those two numbers, but just the, the big numbers. And as I mentioned, without any kind of corresponding increase or increase at all, that, those numbers will continue, if not be worse because of the growth in costs that have occurred even since the study was finalized. So that's, that's just sort of a general summary of the end results. That was all I had for prepared comments. I'm available for questions, should you have any. As detailed as you want, I'll go into the weeds or I'll go high level. You just tell me what you'd like to know, I'd be glad to share that with you.
Well, thank you for that report. It was way deeper than I thought it was, but.
And there's, there's still more to come.
I know, wow. Do you guys have any questions?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Good.
All right. I have a couple of questions.
Oh, go ahead.
So a lot, there was a lot into this on the agenda here with, including the two hundred plus page document that you obviously created and that we had to go through.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, no, no. And this was my first time on the subcommittee in January. So I know it took ten years to create this report. But for myself, I essentially have five weeks to vote on it. And, and in doing my due diligence and trying to go through all two hundred pages, I do have some questions. And I guess the big numbers and separate from the two hundred page is a proposed user fee schedule. And on this, I always look for big numbers that I like to pop out and, and ask questions about. And on this one is number seventeen, which is a parking structure, a hundred thousand square feet and above.
So can I, can I interrupt real quick?
Absolutely.
We have yet to go through that section of the presentation. So I still have about five more slides to go through that'll talk about the fee schedule. So for right now, Chad can address the user fee study, but the fee schedule, we're going to go through next.
I think I, can I, I'd like to address that a little bit. I think you're referring to one of the tables in my report. It says proposed, but it's, it's really not. It's a sample, I guess is a better way to put it. I, I use the term proposed before you've gone through anything and it's at full cost. So what you're seeing there is full cost, the actual results and example of a structure of a potential proposed. I think if you're looking at my report, because I didn't, I didn't actually intend to propose anything. I was just trying to share those results. So I think when, when Jennifer provides the rest, it'll be that. So just to answer your question, as if it was that, those are, every, every number in there is the result of time. So they all, everything I've said up to this point, every one of those numbers, as shocking as they may be, reflects the time staff indicate that's how long it takes to complete something at a particular size and what have you, and all the other costs associated with that. So sorry to defer that question too much.
No worries, deferred until the next report. Thank you, no questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I do have a quick question. So you said you've been doing this for about twenty-six years, correct?
Twenty-six years consulting. Prior to that, I worked in state, federal, local government as a budget and finance analyst. So my experience goes beyond that. But as a consultant, over twenty-six years.
Well, wonderful. And thank you for doing the previous study back in two thousand and five. So obviously, we're here and that's kind of what we've been working off of since two thousand and five, to my understanding. How often do you usually see a city want to be in compliance to make sure that we are up to date on our fee schedule and all of this?
I'm going to sort of give you a wishy-washy answer because it really depends. Some cities, I do updates almost every year or two. Most of the time, that's not the full blown, all the time data and everything. It's just a cost update, just simple changing the expenditures and all of that, salaries and benefits. Cities and county, I do a lot of work for counties as well. If they're doing a full blown fee study, it might be every five years. If they've had a lot of organizational changes, if there's been a lot of legislative change, they might do it every three years. But like I said, it ranged, and some I've done studies for and they've never done a study ever since. And that could have been twenty years ago. So some of them just get what they get and they keep doing inflation for, you know, some sort of inflationary factor, whether CPI or whatever. They might do that for ten or twenty years and then maybe think about doing another study.
Okay, excellent. And just the last thing, I know you had actually just mentioned this right at the end. How many fees were over the full cost amongst these fees that you indicated? Do we not know that?
So I know how many weren't under recovered. My, my metric only counts if it's over or it's not over.
Okay.
Okay, and so the ones that were over was eight hundred and something. The ones that are either, I said over.
I was going to say, what, yes.
Excuse me. The ones that are under recovering and subsidized is eight hundred and something. The ones that were either break even or over recovering was about two hundred and eleven.
Okay, somewhere in between there.
Yeah.
Twenty percent, basically.
Twenty-four percent was the number that I came up with, yeah.
That's why you guys do math. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. Please continue.
All right, thanks, Chad. So now I'll walk you through the staff's recommendations, which were also discussed and conceptually approved by the Strategic Fiscal Services Ad Hoc Subcommittee. So although the city can legally set fees equal to the cost of providing the service, there's multiple factors to consider when setting fees, such as council's priorities and policies, the level of public benefit associated with each fee, compliance with legal standards, as well as the fairness and equity of subsidizing fees. Staff reviewed each fees with these factors in mind and made their professional recommendations accordingly. The target cost recovery rate was set at seventy-five percent for all fees. Each fee was then analyzed individually and adjusted at, below, or above seventy-five percent for a variety of reasons. For example, if the current fee was higher than the cost, that fee was set at a hundred percent and most likely resulted in a fee reduction. After consolidating the fee schedule and removing fees that are no longer relevant, we were left with a total of seven hundred and eighty-six fees. With the addition of the new programs, primarily the annual fire inspection program, one hundred and eighty new fees are included in the proposed fee schedule, with a quarter of them set at one hundred percent cost recovery. Roughly half of the fees are at seventy-five percent cost recovery and sixteen fees are below seventy-five percent cost recovery in order to encourage compliance and increase public safety. Nearly twenty-five percent of the existing fees will be reduced as a current fee, as the current fee exceeds the cost and by law, we cannot charge more than the cost of providing the service. Finally, the new annual fire inspection program fees will average fifty-five percent cost recovery again to encourage compliance and safety for the general public. As noted earlier, the current fee schedule yields about forty-eight to fifty percent cost recovery rate, meaning that general taxpayers are subsidizing over half of these private development activities. The recommended fee schedule will increase this cost recovery rate to nearly sixty-eight percent with the individual departmental rates noted in the chart. Fire prevention would yield fifty-eight percent cost recovery due to the public benefit provided by the majority of their fees. Land development, however, yields the highest cost recovery rate at eighty-four percent due to the level of private benefit in these fee categories. Depending on the development activity volume, the proposed fee schedule could generate an additional three million dollars in general fund revenue if adopted. The Fiscal Services Ad Hoc Subcommittee reviewed and agreed with staff's recommendation to set the proposed fee schedule as presented here tonight. If adopted, the implementation of the proposed fee schedule cannot be less than sixty days from today per state law. However, there's several factors that will impact the timing of implementation. The primary one being the reprogramming of the city's permit system. This could take several months and will be phased in, phased in according to the complexity of the new fee structure by department. All fees would be implemented during fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five if approved tonight. Another consideration staff reviewed was the potential impact of the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act, also known as the CBRT, CBRT measure, which is slated to appear on the November twenty twenty-four ballot. The city attorney reviewed the correlation of the CBRT measure and its impact on the user fee study and has opined that the study complies with both the mitigation fee act and the proposed legal standard under the CBRT. Both require that the user fees may not exceed the cost of providing the service for which the fee is charged. And as stated by our consultant earlier, the user fee comprehensively analyzed the full cost of providing the services and staff and the subcommittee's recommendation was to set the majority of the fees at seventy-five percent of the cost. And in no case is a fee set above the cost of providing the service for which the fee is charged. As mentioned previously, if approved tonight, the fees will become effective next fiscal year. The permit system would be reprogrammed by our information technology department in a phased approach, ensuring that all fees are implemented during fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And finally, the resolution on tonight's agenda includes a future cost of living adjustment to ensure that fees keep pace with inflation. The fees will be automatically adjusted at the start of each new fiscal year in accordance with the change in the CPI for our area. And this is the same inflation area next that has been used since two thousand and five. So with that, that concludes our presentation and we're available for any questions you might have.
Again, thank you for all the hard work. I know this was a big, a big ask, so questions? Anybody have any questions?
I will start off with my question that I asked. Here it is, let's see. So number seventeen on the proposed user fee schedule. It says here, let me find it. There it is. Parking structure, one hundred thousand square feet to five hundred thousand square feet. Current fee, eighty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. Full cost, eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Proposed new fee, eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. A fee reduction of seventy-four thousand, seventy-six dollars. Just explain to me, I guess, one, if we voted to not approve this tonight, would that, A, mean that we are not in compliance with the law? Since technically, we are charging over, well over a hundred percent of the cost recovery? And B, was this eighty-two thousand dollar fee ever charged? Was that not charged? Is that just a, how does that all work?
Couple, couple of things there. So the eighty-four thousand or eighty-two thousand dollar fee was established, the structure of that fee was established in the cost plan that was adopted back in two thousand and five. So, and then it's been escalated per the CPI ever since. The current cost is calculated based on staff's best estimate of what it takes to provide that inspection or issue that permit. And since that time, and we did, this is an extreme example. So we did dig into this a little bit. And while none of us were really here back in two thousand and five to be part of that original cost study, it was contemplated that the technology and methodology improvements over the years have changed the nature of those inspections. One of the examples was for this, back then, every concrete pore would have to be inspected multiple times. Whereas in today's construction world, they use prefabricated slabs. So maybe an inspection, the inspection effort isn't quite there. There's been technology improvements, there's been efficiencies. All of those are reflected within the new cost plan, which is precisely why we should be updating these more periodically to reflect current efforts, levels of efforts, current staffing levels. Luke looks like he wants to add some comments.
Yeah, I just want to add a little bit more nuance to, Jen, thank you. Yeah, so what she's explaining is, is that when you see a jump like that, you have to think that there's some serious technology changes that have taken place, not at the city level, but in the construction side of things and how they do things. And you have to imagine if you're on a parking structure job, there's a lot of concrete, there's a lot of steel. The inspector, it looks like the inspector back in, you know, two thousand and five and, and after, you know, they might be out there all day long for days at a time. And now, you know, after talking to our building team, it's not like that. They don't have to be on site all day, every day during the construction of this project. And when you have an inspector on site all day long, it adds up very, very quickly. So they can come and do an inspection, they leave, they come back and do an inspection, maybe two days later, they got to do another inspection, cuts down on the cost dramatically.
That makes total sense, thank you. And to answer my other question, if we would not approve this, we would be out of policy and going against the current law, is that correct?
That, if we do not approve this, I honestly would have to defer to our city attorney to know about the legal implications. I know a study was done back in twenty-ten that was, you know, we didn't implement at that time. So I'm not sure of the legal ramifications. I don't know if our consultant or Peter can opine on if we'd be out of compliance of any sort.
Well, I was going to offer some context to the first question. The, you've heard mentioned about changing the structure of how the building fees were designed. Prior to the two thousand and five study, building was using the valuation approach, which uses the cost, essentially the cost of construction, to be generic about it. And the fees were based on a percentage of that. The, whenever we do cost analysis, very often, we find that many of those valuation fees are highly overcharged. And I'm going to speculate here because I don't actually remember from twenty years ago what happened exactly. But if, at that time, we had identified that the fee was too high, it wasn't necessarily reduced at that time. And so even though twenty years ago, we might have identified a lower cost then, it may not just have been changed at that time. That's a very common thing I see in studies where we identify a potential reduction and they'll phase it down or do something different rather than just cut it all the way. So it, that cost might just be a remnant from the prior study and it never being changed at that time. Hope that helps. Some of that speculation because I don't actually remember the details of that particular fee.
No, that makes sense. And just one more question. Again, I was on the subcommittee at that time, right? It's like drinking from a fire hose. There's a lot of information that comes in, you're okay with it. And then as time goes on, more information comes out and is, is brought to light. And there was an email chain between Councilmember Alexander and Mrs. Hennessy that had, she had some questions and I just had a question on one of her questions. Let's see if I can find it here real quick. There is, so it talked about when looking at proposed user fee schedules, how many of our fees were being overcharged and past a hundred percent full cost? And correct me if I'm understanding this wrong. Of the seven hundred and eighty-six final count of fees, twenty-five were set at a hundred percent cost recovery, primarily because the current fee exceeded the full cost of providing the service. AKA, we were charging too much, so we needed to lower it down to the full cost of providing the service. A total number of a hundred and seventy-nine fees or twenty-three percent of the fees reflect a decrease, while sixteen percent are set below seventy-five cost recovery. In that statement, a total of one hundred and seventy-nine fees or twenty-three percent reflect a decrease. That is saying that for the ones that we decreased, right? We decreased them down to a one hundred percent cost recovery. So for twenty-three percent of these fees, we were overcharging, is that correct?
Compared to the current cost plan, yes. They were either at or above the cost plan, the current cost.
Okay. That's the only questions I have, thank you.
All right, I got a few questions. Kind of goes in sync with the email that I sent out. So first off, again, thank you, Jennifer. I know you spent a lot of time with me this morning just going over this. And this is a lot of information. And just to let anybody know who has not seen the agenda, there's two hundred to three hundred pages of stuff to go through. I just received this information probably in the last two weeks, the agenda on Thursday. So I've really been trying to do my due diligence and stick into it, find out what, what this information is. Because a lot of this is even new to me as a city council member for being here only three years. So I had an opportunity to sit with, with Mrs. Hennessy and she was explaining to me the timeline from starting back in two thousand and five from when the last full study- timeline from, starting back in two thousand and five, from when the last full study was completed, is that correct? And the next study that started was in two thousand and fourteen. And one of my, one of my concerns is the fact that we have a massive gap of time that these fees weren't taking, looked, they weren't getting looked at. And as the CIP continued to increase the fees, actually allocating, or looking at exactly what Mayor Pro Tem was talking about for page five on this line, I wonder why we haven't caught this before, if we haven't changed anything in the previous fee study. You understand what I'm saying?
I think so.
Okay, so that's one of my, one questions is, why didn't we catch this back then if we were already back in two thousand and five above?
It kinda goes back to what Luke was explaining, is that the, we only do, we only know the cost, the true cost, when a study is done.
Right.
So a study was done in two thousand and five, and the true cost was what it was at the time, and the fee was set at whatever cost recovery rate was chosen by council at that time.
Okay.
The true cost wasn't yet identified again until we completed this cost study a few years ago.
Absolutely.
So during the timeframe where the escalation is occurring per the CPI, we don't know specifically what the cost of that service does each year. And through, over the long span of twenty years, nineteen years, the nature of those inspections, the nature of our service delivery changes. So we didn't know that it was being overcharged throughout that timeframe until we got the new cost plan done. And the new estimates came in and showed that there's been significant efficiencies created in this particular area of inspections and fees related to building and safety.
Thank you. And that was kind of my biggest thing, is there was a significant oversight from the last decade, well, yeah, decade to more, looking at, should we have tried to push out getting this fee study done prior to? So to my understanding, in two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen, there was a new fire inspector that was brought in here to the city, correct? During that time, or there was some new inspections?
A changeover in the fire chief. And the inspection program was new at that time. And there was a change in methodology of how the original study was conducted and completed with the new fire chief that came in at that time. So we revamped that section of the study.
Okay.
And that, that created about a year, year-long delay there. The study was more or less completed in late twenty nineteen, but because of COVID, we felt it wasn't appropriate to bring it forward at that time. So that delayed another couple of years, waiting for COVID to kinda work its way out. And, you know, as, as you can see, it's a very detailed analysis, so we wanted to make sure we did the proper education and outreach to the community, to the BIA before the public hearing. So all of that has taken much longer than we wanted, but we are here today for it.
Could we have rolled out the, the fees and checked the fees before the new fire inspection program study was conducted? So for instance, we had all the other fees that were in there.
Mm-hmm.
To ensure that we are in compliance with the law and to ensure that we are not overcharging residents or key, what's the word I'm looking for, key stakeholders? Would it not have, would it have been an opportunity for us at that point in time to do the analysis and then add in the fire, let's see, the fire inspection program part to it, to make sure we're in compliance? Because I'm just seeing where we have a gap from two thousand and eighteen to now two thousand and twenty-four, where now we could have been charging. I mean, I know we have good, you know, computer updates, all this other stuff is going on, but still, how many people have been getting hit with these that maybe we were overcharging?
Couple of things. So in hindsight, yes, we probably could have bifurcated the study, but we have to be really careful about that because certain departments, certain, certain fees impact all the departments. So there might be one certain fee that goes through building and safety, it goes through planning, it goes through fire. So it is very integrated as well. So to just carve out the one section, we, we maybe could have done that back then, but we, we would have had to kind of rework the model to make sure that we were counting all of those fees that were being, you know, if they were integrated with any other fee, we'd have to be careful to exclude that. And the direct, well, we just, we didn't, we wanted it to be a comprehensive study. So that's why we didn't separate it and bifurcate it. The other thing that you mentioned, who's been overcharged, a lot of these fees on the fee schedule are very, very specific. And the one that, that the Mayor Pro Tem brought forward, the parking structure that's between a hundred thousand and five hundred thousand square feet, I mean, I can defer to Luke, but I'm not sure how many of those that we've actually built in the last several years. So I don't know that anybody in particular was detrimented because of the fee at that time, but we would need to look individually to see how many of each of those fees were actually paid over the last several years to see who's been detrimented.
And that's the thing, is I'm looking right at this, well, that's really close. I'm looking right at this sheet on page five, and just looking at even tenant improvements for a five thousand to twenty thousand square foot place, the current fee right now is nine, a little over nine thousand dollars that the consumer is paying. The actual full cost of that is only two thousand, nine hundred dollars, which means that we've increased, or we've given, we've asked the, the consumer to pay an extra six thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars. And there's several of those, from housing to commercial, single-family. So page five, even hotels, and I know we've had hotels come in, and so that's kind of some of my concerns on those as well.
Councilmember, if I may, I think, I think you're making the case that, why we're here this evening.
Well, and exactly.
To revisit this, and yes, in a perfect world, we should be reevaluating these every three to five years. But for a variety of reasons, we can go into it, we can point fingers, we can do whatever. It wasn't done. There was a great recession. The city council at the time didn't feel it was appropriate to implement any sort of fee adjustments during the, coming out of the great recession or going into the great recession. So guess what? That study got shelved. Then we picked up the study again, and guess what? We had a, we had a global pandemic, and it didn't seem like the right time. So there's been a series of things over the last nineteen years, why we haven't done this more often. You did, you did ask a question, and I wanted to answer something else and just remind the council, current council. But I believe it was in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen where state mandates for fire inspections were becoming a routine for all communities in California. And it was the direction I received from then-council members during those budget workshops was, no, we're gonna do these fire inspections, we're gonna a hundred percent subsidize these at least for a couple of years, and then the direction was to come back and sort of, you know, apply the appropriate fee at whatever level. So again, that was twenty eighteen, that was about six years ago. All those inspections have been gratis, and, but we've calculated it, we've quantified it, and, and we've established sort of a baseline for those new fire inspection fees too, so.
Yeah, and I was gonna basically say exactly what he said, that for the first couple of years, because it was a new rollout and it was a new city activity for businesses, we didn't want to charge for it. It was more of an educational, trying to make sure.
Oh, of course. Oh, no, that's, that's completely understandable.
Yeah.
It's just, it was just everything else, why we didn't roll the rest of it out.
But, but even, like you said, you made the case why we need to do this and we need to do this now.
Oh, for sure. And that's, and so are we at the point where we're just gonna get public comments and then discuss it?
I, I think.
I just want to add a little something. I think it's important to note that we can do whatever we want.
Yep.
And councils at the time felt it was inappropriate to raise fees, and some of these fees now might seem egregious.
Yeah.
But again, things have changed, there's, there's more efficiencies, and we have an online portal for planning now where there's not someone there. So like, we are much more efficient. So again, you know, we can kind of go back and say, gosh, we should have done this, like, yeah, maybe we should have, but there were so many other factors, whether it was a global recession or a recession, and then you get a global pandemic. I mean, those are factors that, you know, councils sit up here and make tough choices and they say, hey, this isn't, we shouldn't be doing this right now. This is not gonna help our community, so.
Right.
That's all I have for right now.
All right, so I think I can open the public hearing right now.
Please.
So I'm gonna do that. And do we have any public comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We only have one public comment, and it is from Bob Cowell.
Good evening.
Hi there. So I was told it was not a tax. Fees are a tax regardless of whether you look at it. And property taxes, if, if, if you don't own a home, it's like saying if you don't own a home, then, then, then it's just a fee. I mean, it, it, a fee is a tax regardless of what you want to call it. The reason Proposition thirteen was put in place was to reduce or allow people to live in their homes that were being overtaxed at the time. So the general fund of the state had to pay for, or the county had to pay for, the people that were, the, 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 the other part of the taxes that the city wanted. In so saying, the, Proposition thirteen, this is kind of a VAT tax in a way. It's a value-added tax to begin with. So what you're doing is adding a tax on to begin with, so what the people can't afford to buy a home anymore because the home is too expensive. So if you're looking for low-cost housing, like this lady behind me here, you're actually adding a VAT tax to it that she can't afford. So we fought Proposition thirteen back when, and, and it was very important. And every time we look around, the fees are added, and maybe they should be coming out of the general fund instead of coming out of new fees. Because people are gonna be feed out of existence, out of their homes. So when I look at adding a, one of the things that bugs me all the time is, just one thing, and I have, I read everything, by the way, today, including all, all of this and the two-hundred-and-eleven pages, and, and I mean, there's more than two, or two-hundred-and-eleven or two-hundred-and-forty-one. Anyway, there's like three hundred pages total if you include the resolution. And by the way, is the resolution voted on tonight? Does that put the fees in, in existence? I just asked that question. Or, or does it go to the ballot? Because it's a tax. It's not a fee. So he can call whatever he wants, but he's wrong. By the way, you know, you also passed in Temecula back in two thousand and sixteen, or, yeah, it's two thousand and sixteen, Measure S, which added a one percent to the sales tax. So you're increasing the cost of living in the city. So every time you do these things, you increase the cost of living for the regular person. So right now, people are being, inflation is killing people when they go to the store and they buy something. You start increasing fees for, for this, then you, then you make it difficult for people to live. One of the things that I was gonna say was changing down to a water heater. I used to go down to the store, buy a water heater, and put it in myself. Right now, okay, you almost have to have a, when the fee went up from one fifty approximately to three hundred dollars. Now, that doesn't sound like a big deal, you know, once in ten years you change your water heater out, but there's water heaters all over the place. And why, why not do technology, why not create technology or use technology that can look at these, instead of, okay, what's missing out, I'm gonna say, what's missing out of this report, which is a beautiful report? What's missing out of it is how to make it more efficient for the workers of Temecula to make the cost of these fees less. So instead of, excuse me, instead of having a person physically go to look at that water heater, why not take a picture of that water heater and send it to the city and say, I installed it myself, and here's what it looks like, and I'll pay the ten-dollar fee. Reduce the cost of fees by looking at efficiencies, increasing the efficiency of the government. They do that in private industry, they should do that in public industry. Thank you, a public, public, whatever. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that is the only public comment on this item. You are welcome to close the public hearing.
I'll close the public hearing. So now, we will go to discussion. So do we have discussion on this?
I personally would like to bring this back to the Subcommittee to go through the information more. I know that is not.
No.
But that is how I feel right now. I feel like I need to do more of a deep dive. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying that I need more information from Mrs. Hennessy, I need more information from the individual that completed the report, and then I feel like I can do my due diligence and make a educated decision on this matter. So that is how I feel.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I do. Thank you very much, Mayor. So there's a couple of things that I looked at. Again, exactly, I believe, with what Mayor Pro Tem, Calphus, I don't remember your name there, Calphus had stated, is we want to make sure we're in compliance with the law. So just to have, I know everybody's kind of, we beat this to a dead horse, but anything over that hundred percent cost is actually considered a tax. And so my number one thing I believe that we have to do is we need to be in compliance in getting any and all those fees down into compliance at a hundred percent or less. That's number one.
What we're doing tonight.
Right, hold on, I'm not there yet?
Yeah.
I got, so I would want to make sure that that is done.
Yeah.
However, I think I also, I do need other information. I believe I spoke to Mrs. Hennessy this morning about it. I would like to take a look to see. The one thing that was not on any of the studies was the percentage that we are increasing for the individual or the, the resident, the stakeholder, per, per line. So for instance, if there is a pool that's going in, how much, how much is it increasing for the tenant? If there are model, let's say somebody has to put windows in, perfect example, how much, how much increase or percentage is that, is that going up? So we can take a look at that, because I don't have that information. That's number one of what I'd like to end up having. Let's see, I just wrote really small here. Let me see. I'd also like to be able to do a deeper dive into this and take a look just in general. And so my recommendation today would be, I would like to come back in approximately a month, allow this to go to the Subcommittee, take a deeper dive, not take this off the table. But the other thing is, is I'd like to see a slow rollout on this as well. For us as a council, to sit here and ask our residents who, as Mr. Cowell was just standing up here, saying how difficult it's being, it is for the individuals here in Temecula, throughout the United States, we're struggling, a lot of people are struggling. So how am I here to sit and put more fees and taxes on, no, they're not taxes, more fees on these individuals? And even if it goes to the developer, because I keep hearing this, well, it goes to the developer, well, those development, development fees end up trickling down to the consumer. So my biggest thing is, is how can we even maybe do a slow roll later in the future to catch up, to get the fees that we should be able to, and, and keep moving forward? But, so, slow roll, push out exactly what we talked about as far as being in compliance, and then doing a deeper dive is my, what I'd like to see.
Mr. Schwank?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I don't know that there's a slower roll than twenty years.
Yeah.
So I have a problem with really putting this on hold. Staff has done a great job, consultants, this is what they do. This is, I'm confident with the numbers. I was on both subcommittees that saw this, once with now Mayor Stewart and once with now Mayor Pro Tem, Calphus. When it first came to do Subcommittee with Mayor Stewart and myself, we had a conversation about, well, what should the public subsidy be? Should we be subsidizing certain things and should we not be subsidizing other things? And rather than just sort of a blanket, you know, we're at fifty percent, we want to get to seventy percent, we asked staff to go back and say, you know, why don't we try to support small businesses? Why should city residents be subsidizing SoCal gas? SoCal Edison? Any other of the utilities that we deal with? Why would I want to ask my constituents to pay more when a developer or a utility isn't paying their fair share? We didn't receive any, any correspondence from the BIA. They're not opposed to this. They're not opposed to this. So, I don't understand why we would be opposed to it. We didn't get any negative feedback from any utilities. They're not opposed to this. Why should we be? We want to make sure we subsidize public safety when necessary. And so, we looked at the fees and we said, "We want to make sure that we're subsidizing the right things." If we're going to ask residents to subsidize the general fund, which by the way, even if we adopt this tonight, we're still subsidizing 30%, something like that, just over 30% from the general fund. So, we're not even getting full-cost recovery for the services. And as time, it seems like everyone's pretty comfortable tonight doing this in a couple of years. And we keep doing this so that we don't have these big gaps. And as things become more efficient or things change and technology changes, we can adapt versus, you know, in another 20 years, we're wondering why a fee is set a certain way. You know, I'm not going to go through all of the fees. But if you think that someone that's installing a pool is struggling to put food on their table, I'm going to struggle with that. So, if someone is installing a pool, we should ask them to pay for the full cost for that permit, not a subsidized part of it. Finally, I mean, we can look through and see places where we need to bring the fee down. And it doesn't make any sense to kick this down the road to do that. One of the things that really stuck out to me, and I don't know, you know, from a sheer numbers perspective, we're going to see huge numbers. But item number 185, 186, and 187 from the proposed user fee schedule effective for 2425, if we adopt this today, the current fee to open an adult business is $14,894 to get a conditional use permit. The full cost of that is almost $22,000. So, we're subsidizing that, $7,000. Employee permit, we're subsidizing that. Owner permit, we're subsidizing that to another about $4,000. Why would we do that? It doesn't make any sense to me. We're asking businesses, developers, utilities to pay a portion, not even asking them for 100%. We're asking them to pay a portion of what it costs for the city to continue to do business. And if we're going to take general fund dollars and keep paying this, well, we're not going to be able to do the sports park that we want to talk about. We're not going to be able to do some of the road things we want to do. We're going to continue to struggle if we continue to do this. We're paid to make tough decisions, and we need to make tough decisions with the information we have. And we have the information in front of us, and I would recommend that we adopt this item tonight.
And I will second that, but I do want to go back to the hot water heater example. The city of Temecula, I believe the charge is $50 or $55. Am I not correct, Luke? How much?
Can we double-check that? That was actually one of the good examples that we discussed.
Exactly. That's what I was going to point out. We actually subsidized that.
We wanted to bring that down.
Exactly. What is the fee proposal for that?
I will say, I'm not sure I'm looking at the right line item. But it's a plumbing and gas permit fees for each hot water and/or vent. The current fee is $27. The current cost is $154. Our proposal is to recover 19% and keep the water heater fee below $30. So, we're proposing $29.26.
Exactly. And that's what the city of Temecula, now Bob's from Marietta, and that's what they probably charge in Marietta. But the city of Temecula actually find value in providing those kind of services to, yeah. So, that's the kind of thing we looked for when Zach and I were on that. We saw that being of value to our community. So, we reduced the fee to where anybody can go in and get their hot water permit without any financial obligation or hardship. So, I agree with Zach. This, we could kick this can down the road. You could examine it upside one, down the other. But the bottom line is, we have a fiduciary responsibility to our residents to recoup these costs. And even at 69%, I think that is wrong. We should be recouping way more than that, again, to use that money for things that will actually improve our lives here in Temecula. Most of these fees, in fact, probably, I don't even know what the percentage is, but it's very, very high, are developers. This is not going to residents. We're not taking food off of tables. We're not, babies aren't going hungry because, in fact, if there is a fee that is attached to a resident, we have brought that down and tried to make that incredibly generous to our residents. But when you're talking development fees, it's the cost of business. We should not be using public funds for private enterprise, and that's what we're doing right now. So, I'm totally against kicking this can down the road. Yeah, Zach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to add, when we talked in subcommittee, you know, both Mayor Stewart and myself, we felt that, you know, that target of, you know, 60, 65, 70% wasn't enough.
No.
We felt, given everything, we wanted to make sure that the folks that were asking the most were paying the most. And the folks that needed it the most were paying the least. And so, that was the whole context of this, was to go back. And it took staff time. Staff went back and went line by line and looked at it and said, "Okay, does that make sense? Is that small business?" "Yes." "Okay, we want to make sure we're supporting our barbers and making sure that we're supporting mom-and-pop shops in Old Town," right? But if someone comes in, like, why should we subsidize a multimillion-dollar, a billion-dollar corporation or utility? Like, I'm surprised people like want utilities to pay less.
Yeah.
Like, give me a break. Like, this is good business. And the fact that we haven't done it for a variety of reasons over the last 20 years, okay, that's fine. That's past councils. This is us. If we don't pass this tonight, we're using public general fund dollars to subsidize private industry, and that's wrong.
Yeah.
Do you want to go?
You can go first.
You know, you're right. We do have a responsibility, 100%. And that's why I'm saying, first off, we need to be in compliance. And that's pretty simple to see on this chart which fees are not in compliance. So, we can absolutely do that. So, that's number one. And when I hear, if I said pool, it's just because it was a line item. But people are struggling, and if a developer pays fees, let's say, let's throw out a number. I'll say 30,000 or 40,000. Who's paying for those fees from that house? So, when I have a resident coming in, those fees are going directly to that purchaser of that house.
Not necessarily. You don't understand business then because...
So, but I just got done speaking with, I just, wait, wait, it's my, okay, hold on.
Not us, not the developer.
I understand that. Stu, let me talk, please. Well, after I just got done speaking to two developers last night and today, they were in agreement, saying, "Yes, the fees do go down to the consumer." And that was developers themselves. So, and that's not coming from me as an expert. That's coming from the people there doing the business. So, and yes, Zach, I do agree. There, some of these fees, absolutely, we need to raise them. Or absolutely, we need to be able, allow the public to pay for them. But that's what I believe myself and Calphus, how we're looking at this, is we want to go line by line. Have we, as a council, has everybody here, the four of us, gone line by line and knowing what you are going to vote on? That's, seriously, I know we have staff, but the question is, have we gone through each and every line item and understanding it? And you don't have to answer that. But we have to be able to put our name to this. And I can sit here and say right now, I have not looked, I've looked at several, if not the majority of these, but I might not understand everything, and I want to make the best decision for this city as a councilwoman.
I just want to add, though, we have a very professional staff, that that's what they do for a living. You don't do that for a living. You don't do that for a living. They do it for a living. And they went through line by line, calculated it, made what was fair, fair. What was not fair, they made fair. So, you're pushing that off because you, who have no knowledge of this, and because you want to do it. So, you're actually putting yourself above...
No, I'm responsible for my constituents. I'm responsible. It's my name goes on it. It's not the, listen to me. It's not the staff's name that goes on it. It's mine.
Okay.
And I trust our staff, but the fact of the matter is, is I need to sit down and just, excuse me?
You don't trust your staff. If you are ready to overturn your staff...
Don't tell me what I do and don't do. Please. Excuse me. That's not polite.
Okay.
Don't tell me what I do and don't do.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Calphus?
Yes. Well, I just want to say, I came here with questions. I had a lot of questions. And Mrs. Hennessy answered the questions. Our job up here at this public setting, at a public hearing, is to listen to all sides of the story. And I feel like I agree with everyone up here, which is, it puts me in an interesting position. I agree with a public speaker that talked about the fees and taxes. But I do feel like that if this is brought back to a subcommittee, I don't know what changes that I could see or what changes I could make that would make this report any better or would change my opinion on anything. And again, I came here with questions. Those questions were answered. At this time, I do feel that going forward, I would hope this fee study would be completed sooner than 20 years, sooner than 10 years. And hopefully, next time, we don't wait this long to approve user fees. And I guess I'm telling staff that I would like these to be done more frequently. Regardless of a pandemic, regardless of a recession, these should be implemented every two to three years. That way, we don't have these large gaps and these large increases or decreases or just all over wrong numbers because technology has improved over the course of 20 years. So, moving forward, we should absolutely do these more frequently. But I agree that we need to come in compliance. We need to get the fees that are over 100% to 100%. And again, I do believe that bringing this to a subcommittee, I don't think my opinion would change or there would be information that would be brought forward that would change the outcome of this vote here tonight. Therefore, I do agree with the mayor and council member.
So, I'm going to call for the question. Let's vote.
So, I'll go ahead and move the item.
And I second it.
11, approve proposed fiscal year 2024-25 user fee schedule.
Yes.
I don't have a way to vote on here. It hasn't popped up. If you would like to verbally voice your...
No.
Yes.
So, recorded, I have three ayes. Councilmember Schwank, Mayor Stewart, and Mayor Protem Calphus, and a nay from Councilmember Alexander. It is being recorded now. The item passes three to one.
All right. So, we're on to item number 12, which is approve fiscal year 2324 mid-year budget adjustments. May I have a staff report?
And that's me again. All right. Thank you, councilmembers and mayor. Tonight, we're going to review the 2324 mid-year budget update. The general fund revenue, we're going to focus on general fund first. So, revenue is actually decreasing by about $6.3 million. Most of that decrease comes from sales tax, which is down $1.5 million due to slowing economy that we're seeing, as well as development activity. We're seeing a slowdown there as well, so we're reducing that budget by $1.1 million. TOT is actually going up by $700,000, but that's because we're receiving double payments from one of the major hotels currently for the remainder of the year. And then transfers in from Measure S, that is, we toggle that between Measure S and general fund, and we're reducing that by $4.5 million due to a higher fund balance that we received last year. Operating expenditures are also decreasing by $3.9 million. Salaries and benefits are down $389,000, mostly due to vacant positions that are currently not filled. Operations and maintenance costs are going up $40,000. We're seeing a drop in internal service fund allocations of about $210,000 to correct an error that was implemented in the adopted budget. And then transfers out are going down. That's related to the OPEB or the retiree health benefit liability due to an updated actuarial valuation. So, total general fund revenue is now standing at a little over $112.5 million. This chart shows revenues compared to expenditures, and it shows, the green line indicates revenue, and that's showing that it is exceeding expenditures, not only in the current year, but in each of the following years, indicating that we are structurally balanced throughout our five-year projection. The operating requests at mid-year by department reflected here. City Attorney's Department is requesting an increase of $120,000 primarily for legal services and upcoming lawsuits. The Human Resources Department, also in the legal services areas, requesting $75,000 and an additional $20,000 for investigative services. Planning Department is decreasing their budget by 50K due to consulting services that will not be conducted this fiscal year. Code Enforcement is requesting $77,500 for the weed abatement program. Public Works looks like a large increase. It's actually a correction on our internal service fund allocation. It's increasing by about $859,000, but it's being offset by reductions in both police and fire, as noted below that. And then again, the non-departmental line is decreasing due to the updated actuarial valuation report. This chart illustrates where our ending fund balance is, both historical and the five-year forecast. The blue bars indicate the fund balance levels. And then the green line shows where our funded reserve levels are. And the yellow diamonds indicate where our policy level reserve, the desired reserve, should be. So, in each year, we are meeting our policy level reserves of 25% of the general fund operating. And we have a little bit of extra each year that is being dedicated towards our debt paydown strategy that I'll give an update on at the end of the presentation. Moving on to Measure S, similar to sales tax, we're seeing a reduction in the Measure S tax. It's down a little over $500,000. We are earning interest in this fund, $352,000, so that offsets the reduction in the Measure S tax slightly. Expenditures are totaling just under $70 million, 69.2. They are decreasing by $5.6 million mainly because of the transfer to the general fund I mentioned previously. We don't need to make the $4.5 million transfer this year. The transfer to TCSD, our community services, is down, again, because their prior year fund balance was higher than anticipated. Same with the library fund. And then between the Technology Replacement Fund, we are no longer, or we're proposing to no longer contribute the $500,000 into that fund, but rather direct that to the Facilities Replacement Fund as the tech replacement fund has an adequate reserve balance currently. And then you can see our ending fund balance in Measure S is about $16.6 million. And overall, the appropriations out of Measure S follow the council appropriation guidelines that were adopted when Measure S was implemented. 65% will go towards capital projects this year, about 8% or $5.4 million towards public safety, $4.5 towards asset management, and the remainder to community services. And as time goes by, there will be more and more dedicated to public safety and community services with less available for capital projects. The TCSD fund revenue is decreasing mainly due to the reduction in the Measure S contribution I just mentioned. However, their program revenue is increasing. So, we're seeing higher program revenue coming from the activities at the CRC, Community Recreation Center. We're seeing higher activity in the aquatics program and in sports, as well as the theater. Expenditures are going down by about $390,000, mostly due to that correction to the internal service fund allocation. And we target a fund balance in TCSD of $100,000. Internal service funds, so these are funds that provide services to other city funds. The first one is the insurance fund, and we are seeing higher claim and litigation activity in that fund. So, there's a request to increase that appropriation by $600,000. I mentioned the change in the Technology Replacement Fund. We want to decrease that contribution from Measure S and redirect that to the Facilities Replacement Fund instead. There are some adjustments to our CIP. The first one is the Nicholas Road Multi-Use Trail Extension. Construction bids came in higher than anticipated in the budget, increasing by a little over $1 million. We're proposing to utilize $600,000 from Measure A to fund the overage and as well as transfer $450,000 from another... from Measure A to fund the overage and, as well as transfer 450,000 from another, um, project, the Bike Lane and Trail Project, utilizing AB 2766 funding for that. Another project, uh, we are, uh, the Traffic Signal Safety Lights and Signal Communications Upgrade. Uh, that is showing an increase of about 115,000 in funding. However, it's really just an advance from 2425, moving that into the current year. Uh, we will be utilizing some grant funding from the HSIP program, and the remainder is funded through diff traffic signal funding. And then finally, a new project, um, to the CIP, although it was originally budgeted is, uh, excuse me, in the operating budget, and this is, uh, utilizing $500,000 from the Community Reinvestment Program funding. And this project will install wrought iron-like fencing along the north side of Temecula Creek between Pachanga Parkway and Jedidiah Smith. And you can see, if you follow along here, the cursor, you can see that's the area in which the fencing will be installed. Again, that's utilizing the CRP monies, um, that was allocated by council, um, over the last few years. Also, as part of tonight's package is the updated salary schedule. So with our labor agreements, um, there is a formula for a cost of living adjustment, and that formula looks at, uh, two parts. Uh, one is the change in the Consumer Price Index, as well as the change in recurring revenue amongst the city's major funds. And the reason for that is we want to ensure that any type of cost of living adjustment, um, is afforded, um, and that fits within our revenue growth. So our revenue growth showed a four and a half percent increase, uh, between last year and the year before that, and the CPI showed an increase of 4.4%. So the updated salary schedule will include a 4.4% cost of living adjustment for all authorized and project employees, including all management, confidential, as well as executive staff positions. Uh, this pay, uh, this pay adjustment will be effective the first pay period in, uh, including July 1st, 2024. And this 4.4% COLA has been factored into all of the five-year forecast shown previously. And then finally, I wanted to give you an update on our debt liability paydown, uh, strategy. So again, this was adopted back in December of 2022. The goal is to pay off all facility loans and have both the OPEB, which is the Other Post-Employment Benefit, um, Plan, as well as the pension, be 100% funded within seven years. Um, to date, we have paid off, um, the MRC, or I'm sorry, the Civic Center loan, which was 12.6 million dollars. Um, that has been paid in full. The Margarita Recreation Center loan was a little over $5 million. That's been paid in full. The OPEB liability, which again is the retiree health, was originally a little over $5 million was the obligation. However, with the updated actuarial valuation report, the liability amount was reduced to 3.25 million, and that's been paid in full. And that leaves us with the pension. Um, the pension liability, uh, when we, uh, created the strategy, the overall liability was a little over 52 million. Um, with their last valuation report, um, the CalPERS conducts every year, that liability increased to just under 62 million due to a variety of, um, assumption changes in their valuation report. To date, we've paid off 21.7 million, and over the next several years, we have, uh, programmed to pay off between eight to nine million per year, with the seventh year, a $6.3 million payoff, and that would still achieve a seven-year paydown. Um, the pension would be fully funded and all other debts paid off, uh, within seven years, given the current, um, the current forecast. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Always very in-depth. So, any questions? Nope, nope. All right, so I will entertain a motion. Move to approval.
Second.
Mine is still not working.
Oh.
Yay.
So that passes 4-0. All right, so we're on to item number 13. Approve Amendment Number Seven to the City Manager, Aaron Adams' Employment Agreement. And I'll hand it off to Ms., oh, there's a public-
There is, Mr. Mayor. Just for awareness purposes, there is a public comment on this item.
Okay. So, Mr. Thorson, would you give the staff report?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. On, uh, February the 13th, the council met in closed session to discuss the City Manager's Employment Agreement, and as a result of that closed session, the council directed me to prepare an amendment with four changes. Uh, the first change provides a 4.4% cost of living adjustment, raising his salary to 348,951 dollars. This is the same cost of living adjustment provided to all of the employees in the city as part of the MOU with the Teamsters Local 9/11. Under the current agreement, the council approves cost of living adjustments that are over 3%, uh, which brings us to the second change, and that is to remove the requirement that the council approve cost of living adjustments over 3%. Uh, the cost of living adjustment is a percentage change in the Cost of Living Index over the last year. The Cost of Living Index is calculated by the U.S. Department of Labor each month and published in the Federal Register and its website. So there's no discretion in the cost of living adjustment. It is what it is, calculated by the U.S. Department of Labor, and it is the only automatic salary increase that is allowed by state law. Um, and with that, if there are any changes to the city manager's salary other than the cost of living adjustment, that would be, uh, come back to the City Council for approval. Uh, the third change is to maintain the existing city contribution to the city manager's deferred compensation plans, but change the plan to which the compensation is made. A contribution to the city manager's deferred comp account, uh, in amounts set by federal tax law, has been a part of his employment agreement, uh, since his first day. Uh, there are two deferred comp accounts for, uh, local employees under federal tax law, the 401A Plan and the 457B Plan. Uh, the amendment would change the city's contribution and provide it to the 401A account, uh, through the end of the term, uh, but not change the, uh, amount of the contribution. Uh, this gives the city manager greater flexibility for his own personal contributions. And the fourth is to exte- extend the last day of the term, 11 days from December 30, 2026, to January 10, 2027, with allowing the city manager to resign between December 20 and January 10 without the normal 60-day notice. And this is necessary to accommodate the decisions that need to be made uh, with respect to PERS and deferred compensation, um, at the end of the agreement. Now, um, the agreement provides that the council and the city manager will discuss whether to extend the agreement at least six months prior to the end of the term, so the council won't be in a position to have to scramble to find a replacement. You'll know well in advance if the, uh, contract is going to end. So with those four changes, um, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the amendment.
Questions?
No.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, um, because of compaction is the reason why the 4.4 has to be, uh, given to Mr. Adams, because the person right underneath him is getting the raise, correct?
That's correct.
Yes. So I just want to clarify that, just so people don't think we're, uh, doing something out of the ordinary, but it's part of his contract and the city agreement, so. All right, so I will take a motion.
All right, I'll go ahead.
Actually, I have one public comment.
Oh, one public, yeah.
There's only one public comment on this item, and it is from Edward Hubler.
Good evening.
I'm Edward Hubler. I've lived in Temecula for 36 years, on Green Tree Road for 26 years. And, uh, I have a few questions, and one of the questions I have, I'm on Social Security. I'm 77. We only got 3.2% from Social Security. How can you justify giving working people 4.4%? Number one. Number two, okay, when I moved on to Green Tree Road, okay, it was a private road gravel. In about 2006, a developer wanted to build million-dollar homes at the end of Green Tree Road.
Okay, this is the next item. So you're, you're kinda on the next item already.
What, what I'm basically saying, okay, is I object, okay, to any type of an agreement with your city manager, Aaron Adams, okay? He is corrupt, okay? Right here, I got proof that he's a corrupt individual, okay? He's lying. Uh, on the, uh, news, uh, patch, news Temecula patch, said that, uh, he was going to get a 4.4% raise, okay, on his salary of 243,000 a year. I have from very reliable sources that his total package is 550,000 dollars a year. And you guys are trying to figure out how to scrap money to do things like clean roads and everything else, okay, and you're overpaying this corrupt individual. You ought to fire this guy and not talk about paying him or changing his dings, and I have information on why. I wanted a, a hearing on his corruption, and I got a letter from your lawyer, Temecula lawyer, that denied me a hearing, okay, because he violated my First Amendment rights, okay? That guy is a corrupt individual, and he ought to be fired!
Okay. Anybody else?
Nope, that's the only public comment.
All right, so now I'll take a motion.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and move the item, but I'd, I'd like to say, uh, to our city manager, um, that, um, and to the balance of the workforce, you know, uh, we have built a very wonderful city. And Aaron, under your leadership, um, you've, you've steadied the ship over the years, and you continue to take us, uh, as a group, uh, to places that, um, aren't really materialized in many other, uh, cities. I could argue that you have to put up with us, and I don't know that you get paid enough to put up with us at times. But I am confident in the work you do, uh, and the balance of the, of the workforce in the city of Temecula do a wonderful job, and, uh, I made the motion, and I will support this 100%.
I'll second it. Let's vote. And that passes 4-0. So we're on to the last and final item, item number 15. Consider the creation of an ad hoc subcommit- committee to discuss issues related to the acceptance of streets into city-maintained street system for street maintenance by the city at the request of Mayor, uh, Protem Kalphus. So I will give, uh, can I get a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
It's getting late.
It, it is. This is our, our last business item, so, um, bear with me. I will go ahead and provide a brief staff report, and then we do have a single slide that will help with the decision-making tree. Um, so, um, on February 13, 2024, the City Council voted to place the creation of an ad hoc subcommittee to discuss issues related to the acceptance of streets into the city-maintained street system for street maintenance by the city at the request of Mayor Protem Kalphus. Pursuant to Government Code Section 830, public property means real or personal property owned or controlled by the public entity. It does not include easements, encroachments, or other property that is located on the property of a public entity that is not owned or controlled by the public entity. Public property is financially supported and maintained by public taxpayer dollars. Pursuant to Streets and Highways Code Section 1806, streets may become public, included in the street system if they are formally accepted pursuant to the process set forth in the law. Specifically, Section 1806B and C state as follows. Except as provided by Section 989, or by Section 57329, or 57385 of the Government Code, no public or private street or road shall become a city street or road until the governing body by resolution has caused the street or the road to be accepted into the city's street system. In lieu of the procedure set forth in that subdivision, the governing body of a city can, by ordinance, designate a city officer to accept on behalf of the governing body streets and roads or portions thereof into the city's street system, and to record conveyances to the city of real property interest for street and road uses and purposes. The designee has to, prior to recording any conveyance under that section, affix a certificate to the instrument stating that the acceptance into the city's street system, and designating the name and number or both of the city's street or road. From time to time, the city does receive inquiries from community members requesting consideration for their street to be publicly maintained and incorporated into the city's street system. Generally, a public purpose is identified to consider such a request, given the funding mechanism connected to such maintenance and incorporation. The subject of public property and public streets is broad. As such, it is recommended that if the council wishes to establish an ad hoc subcommittee, it also provide tailored direction to the subcommittee on its purview within the broader subject. This will also require staff to research and analyze the specific issues that are being considered for policy consideration and implementation. Staff has already provided certain information to the City Council, um, and, um, I would like to turn the staff report over to Public Works Director Pat Thomas, who will just briefly review the information that has already been provided to City Council.
Thank you, Randy. And, uh, and, yeah, and I also like to provide a little background, a little more background as to how this subject has come up. So we have a, a residential slurry seal project currently underway that's part of our, our overall, um, pavement management program in the city, and we received some questions from, uh, a few residents as to why their streets were not included in that slurry seal project. And the short answer to that question is because according to our records, those streets have not been accepted for maintenance by the city. There's, um, there's a, there's a different story associated with, with many of these streets, but the most common story is that they were created, uh, as part of a subdivision. So these roads were created by a subdivision that was approved prior to the city incorporation by the County of Riverside. They're typically older subdivisions where the improvements were not, uh, as, um, as, um, high a level as they are currently in the city, and the county followed a practice where they would require that those dedications be granted for public use, but not accepted for maintenance. And that's the practice that the, the county followed, and when the city incorporated, we basically just inherited that condition for these, these streets. And, and those are, those are referred to as private streets, but what it really means is that they were dedicated for use, but not for maintenance. So that, those questions came up, uh, and again, like I said, our records indicated that, uh, we, those have not been accepted by the city for maintenance. Um, so staff suggested that we do a, a, basically a complete inventory of all of our street system and identify all these streets that we have that are in that category of, of having not been accepted for maintenance, which we've been working on over the last couple of months, um, and we've been refining that, and, and we, we believe we've got a, a complete list now of all of those streets. So we do have that information available. We did, uh, apply some factors to what we currently spend on maintenance of our public streets that we do maintain to, um, estimate what it would potentially cost to maintain those streets that have been not, that have not been accepted, as well as what it would cost to construct a new street, say, if it were be, if it were to be needed to actually fully replace those streets if the city were to, to take over responsibility for those streets. But again, that, that list and that inventory, um, is, was put together for those streets that, that, uh, fall into that category of, of having not been accepted by the city, um, according to our records. So that's, that's where we stand on, on the subject right now.
Okay. Um, so-
I think, I think we'd like to turn it over to the vice mayor who requested that item, if, uh, I think that's appropriate.
I'm gonna do it a little differently for you tonight. I'm gonna stand at the podium and give you a little presentation. Go for it. I feel like this is-
Feel like this is the best avenue for me to give you a presentation and let's discuss it after, so let's see if it pulls up here. Beautiful, all right. So, uh, first off, I think that we should always be open for conversation. I don't think there should ever be a reason not to have a conversation. Um, so I want to thank my fellow council members for allowing me to give you this presentation today. Uh, while running for public office, we always hit on big-ticket items. Public safety, homelessness, housing crisis, and infrastructure. Today, we're gonna talk about one of our bread and butters as policymakers, and that's infrastructure. In the act of transparency, um, I want to describe how this all came about. A constituent in my district emailed me and said, hey, like our, uh, Director of Public Works, Patrick Thomas, said, why are my streets not being maintained? I didn't know the answer, so what happens when a council member receives an email from a constituent? We forward it to our city manager. The city manager then forwards it to the head of their correct department. The head of their correct department then types up an email, sends it back to the council member. The council member then has the option to either reply back to the constituent as themselves giving the reply or directly from the head of the department. In this case scenario, I emailed back the individual the reasons why his streets were not slurry sealed. He emailed me back and said, everything you just provided to me was false. Um, if anyone knows me, you know that I do not like being wrong, so I did my due diligence and I just went to start digging. Um, and I said, instead of just saying that I'm wrong and the information I gave you is wrong, let's meet in person and let's just have this discussion. At that time, we had a meeting with city staff. Um, our Director of Public Works was there, uh, many others were there. Our city manager was absent in that meeting. Um, but in that meeting, uh, similar items were discussed on these public non-maintained roads and public maintained roads issues. Uh, after that meeting, um, there was essentially no closure on why that road, his particular road, which an individual lives off it that is here, uh, Green Tree, was not, um, maintained. After that meeting, I asked staff to create a report that had a very specific criteria. This criteria is very simple, and I will describe it to you today. It is residential roads that were built after our incorporation in eighty-nine. So I'll say that again, residential roads built after our incorporation, so the city had a say in how these roads would be constructed. Those roads that were built after nineteen eighty-nine when we incorporated, that do not have an HOA, they are paved, and they have no, um, funding mechanism in place to maintain them. And the and when you dwindle it down, and so when I asked for that, right, I asked for those very, uh, direct and specific details. What we received back is what was emailed out to the entire city council, which was a seventy-five million dollar proposal. This seventy-five million dollar proposal, um, included things such as private HOA-maintained roads. So out of seventy-five plus million dollars, fifty-three million dollars of those were private HOA neighborhoods, which, um, no council member and no one that understands law would try to accept private maintained roads into our system. So take that seventy-five million, subtract the fifty-three million, and you're left with the remaining, uh, figure, the twenty millions. In that final map that we were given, there was also Somers Bend was incorporated in this map. Somers Bend has a mechanism to be publicly maintained in the future. The developer is not building, but at the end of that development, those roads will be maintained by us, excluding the fifty-five and plus HOA gated communities, which will be private streets. So take that Somers Bend, ten million plus dollars, and drop that out of the bucket. Take all of the unpaved, unmaintained roads that we would not construct a road because the developer is the one that constructs roads. Take those unpaved roads in Nicholas Valley and, uh, north of Nicholas Street and drop those out of the bucket. And you're left with literally in between four and eight streets in our entire city that were built after our incorporation, that are not private roads, that have no HOA and that are paved, that are left without a funding mechanism to maintain their roads. So in this seventy-five million dollar proposal we were given, uh, we were also given a spreadsheet that had to, uh, that broke down every street in the city. Um, and I think we can all agree on, even after our last discussion, is that our success as city council members depends on the accuracy of the data that we receive from staff. We rely on factual and accurate information to make the best decisions for constituents. That is fact, we have to rely on staff. With that being said, the final map that was given to us, would you say, and this is a question for generally for staff, that the information you provided us was factual and accurate?
So the, uh, the information that that was first presented to the council was, I'll call it a working draft. And, um, you know, like I said earlier, we've continued to refine that, so we have made some some, um, changes to that to that list based on having done that additional research, and and I believe we have a a more accurate list now.
So the the map that we were given, uh, stated final map. We, right, so, uh, in the act of transparency, we were given a a an initial map, which was not this one you see before you today. We were given a different map in the initial meeting that I have with the constituent. After that, we were provided a rough draft, and after that, we were provided a final draft. In that final draft, that was labeled in bold and underlined letters, final, was that information true and accurate?
I would say it 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 was based on, um, the what information we have. And the one specific example that that you brought up is is the Somers Bend, uh, streets. And technically, because those have not been accepted yet, those were included in that original list. Um, however, um, you know, like I said, as we, you know, knowing that those will be accepted and, uh, ultimately maintained by the city, we've taken them out of the the latest list that we have.
I would absolutely agree that that is a a good move to take out the Somers Bend. And here tonight, I will provide you with three discrepancies in the map out of dozens. I'm going to show you three wrong information that we were provided out of dozens. And the amount of corrections on this final map and data provided to us is over thirty thousand dollars of annual expenditures that is wrong on the final map provided for. The resolution that I have sought from the beginning is less than the amount of the mistakes on the map that we are provided. So this is the final map in the, uh, this is what it looks like. There's green streets, there's, uh, red streets, and then there's, so there's public accepted. It's kind of hard to see here. Uh, there's public accepted, public not accepted, and private, um, roads here. The first discrepancy that I will show you tonight, and all it would have taken is for someone on staff or on council to look at the first street here. The first street, the irony is not lost on me, the first street on this map, Al Hazan Circle. It says it is a public not-accepted road. So all I did, and I went through every single street on this map, and I went through every public non-maintained road chart, I'll show you three of the many mistakes here tonight. Al Hazan Circle has on this chart here an annual maintenance cost of one thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars and upgrade replacement cost, which keep in mind, we would never tear apart an entire street and rebuild it, is eighty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. This is Al Hazan Circle. So if we can do dual screen here real quick, I will show you what it looks like on this map. So a little Al Hazan, where'd you go, buddy? There you are. Is this guy right? Al Hazan, that little guy right there. And that's what, on the left side, is a Google Maps picture of it. This is Al Hazan Circle. It is in a normal neighborhood. It is publicly maintained. This is a picture of it getting pre-slurry sealed in March of two thousand eighteen. And on our map, it is publicly maintained. Discrepancy number one. The data saying it is public non-maintained and it has a dollar figure attached to it on the map given to us, public accepted, because it is public accepted. That is discrepancy number one. Number two, this is Cresta Verde. This is, uh, one of the streets in question here. This street is, uh, right near Santiago Estates. On our data here, it says that Cresta Verde is public not-accepted with an annual maintenance cost of three thousand one hundred and forty-five plus another one thousand three hundred and twenty. On the map, let's see if I can find it for you. Cresta Verde, let's see, where's my finger? There you are. There we go. Cresta Verde. So this is an interesting one. On our map, three quarters of it are public not-accepted with a little sliver of green of public accepted. First off, in city emails, it says, we will not maintain a road that is attached to a non-public maintained road. So on our map, it is saying that we take a public non-maintained road to get to this little cul-de-sac here and maintain it. When the truth is, if you look at the pictures on the left here, the entire street is slurry sealed and maintained. Discrepancy number two. Discrepancy number three, Dahlia Way. Where are you at, Dahlia? There you are. Uh, let's see. Dahlia Way. Red, non-maintained. If you go on to our spreadsheet here, you will not see a Dahlia Way. Discrepancy number three. There are over thirty thousand dollars of annual maintenance costs that are incorrect on this information. How can we be expected to vote and to enforce current policy that we already have in place when we are presented with inaccurate information? And I agree with you, Councilmember Schwenk, in the last argument where you said we have to trust our staff. We have to rely on our staff. And if we can't have a correct dollar figure, how can we rely on our staff if they're providing us with inaccurate, false information? And again, that's three examples, and in the sake of time, I'll save you the rest of the examples I have. It leads me into my next point, which we have a policy in place today that requires that off-site and public roads be paved and then maintained. HOAs are required to be created if the city chooses to forego accepting those public roads. The city has the obligation to ensure that a publicly designated road that is to be paved must have methods in place for maintenance. It's reasonable to assume that if a city fails in the effort to do this, it has made the decision to maintain the road. An example of this is Belmonte Court East, which I just showed you with Cresta Verde. It was developed under the Temecula Guidance and it has no HOA in place. On our map, it says, public non-maintained. In reality, which is the picture still up on the screen, we are slurry sealing that road. We are telling council we are not maintaining this road. It is being maintained. Unfortunately, the city has inadvertently left Green Tree, Deodar, Ormsby, and Villa El Delora out in the cold with no HOA and no maintenance. We have the avenue to correct this inequity. And the policy I'm referring referring to is our building permit issuance policy for lots on dirt roads. I'll put our focus here on option A and option B. And I'll explain this very simply. When a developer comes into the city, it has two options. Option A, you build the street to our standard and we accept you as a public road. Option B, you build it to a lower standard and it becomes a private road, and the caveat is that you have to put in an HOA. And off of Green Tree, off of Ormsby, and, uh, Deodar and El Delora, this was not applied. This policy that we have in place was not applied. We had public roads built, and then we had no HOA, and we did not accept them, so they have gone unmaintained for over two decades. And now we are saying, well, it's the it's the individual homeowner's responsibility. When in the reality of it, there's only two to four streets, depending on the criteria that we look at, that have been left out in the cold and left to their own devices. And the question is why? Why were these roads left out? Was it a mistake on the city? Was it a mistake on the developer? Why and what is the reason? And the answer to that is, the answer is we need a a subcommittee to look into why these roads were left out of the the system. Lastly, we have a standard in our city. We say that the standard is you build streets up to the width, you build streets up with curbs, with sidewalks, with lighting and gutters. We say standard, standard, standard. What you have in front of you today is showing you that we have a standard, but we also have a second standard. And that's the rural standard. This rural standard in front of you today, I'll read you a a part of it. This talks about RPAs, which are Rural Preservation Areas. In our land use element, under our general plan, it talks about these RPAs. Temecula only has one RPA, and that is, uh, up near Nicholas Road, the north of Nicholas Road where all the dirt roads are, off Leifer Road, that is our one RPA. But we apply the rural standard to many other neighborhoods in our, I shouldn't say many, five other neighborhoods in particular throughout the city. Meadowview, Los Ranchitos, and Santiago Estates, the Crown Hill Estates, which are the gated HOA community behind Crown Hill, and the Nicholas. And our fifth community is the one that is in question today, which is the Green Tree. And in this policy, you'll see, this is my favorite line. While most community standards are appropriate for urbanized areas, rural residential areas may require modified zoning regulation and engineering slash public improvement standards. Such standards should also focus on maintaining the rural character and achieving a gradual transition between rural areas and suburban slash urban developments. If you go on, first bullet point, number one, reduction to the minimum width of roadways and street lighting requirements. Bullet number two, modifications to road design standards, including elimination of vertical curbs, paved gutters, and sidewalks. So while we're telling residents off of Green Tree, which are rural residential areas, and they are rural residential areas, so this is the RPAs. This is just showing that we have three in our, um, in our city map here, but the two and three are actually outside of the city. They are just in our quote-unquote sphere of influence in the wine country. So the only one we identify is number one. And this breaks it down even further. So rural residential areas, and the top left over there, that's the one that, uh, talks about with the lack of curbs and sidewalks and street lightings, et cetera. Right below it, we have very low residential housing. This designation provides for single-family detached residential development on large lots. This designation is also consistent with large lot residences that keep horses and other animals or utilize a portion of that land for agricultural production. AKA rural. If you look over into the chart on the right, it talks about rural, and where it says, very low-density housing compatible with light agriculture activities and vineyards. Right below it, very low. Single-family detached homes on large lots with a rural ranchette character development. We take our rural standard and we apply it correctly, I would add, to Meadowview, to Los Ranchitos, to Santiago Estates, and incorrectly to Green Tree. This is our very low zoning in our city. Keep in mind, this is all done by, uh, myself, because I only had five hours of staff time. They used their five hours to create a seventy-five million dollar project that was, had nothing to do with what I asked for. So my five hours was allotted. I had said, I'll do it myself. So here it is, very low zoning. We have five in our city. We have Meadowview, we have Santiago Estates and Los Ranchitos, we have Green Tree. Green Tree is that little guy right in the middle there on the right side. We also have Nicholas, and again, Crown Hill Estates in the gated HOA community. We apply the rural standard. Mayor, you'll be familiar with Meadowview. It has no sidewalks, it has no gutters, it has no curbs, it has no streetlights. Ms. Alexander, you'll be familiar with Los Ranchitos and Santiago Estates. It has no gutters, it has no sidewalks, it has no curbs, it has no streetlights. Very low-density streets. And I would be, as it's in my district, very familiar with Green Tree, which is that little very low-density which has no curbs, no gutters, no sidewalks, and no street lightings, except we are asking them to bring their street up to the city standard of forty feet wide streets, which we say in our policy, we don't need forty feet wide streets in rural areas. We're asking them to put gutters in, to put sidewalks in, to put street lighting in, and then we'll accept you. When the actuality of it is that twenty years ago, when this area was developed, we had the opportunity to abide by our policy, A, and have the developer build it up to whatever standard the city said, or option B, you develop, you develop it to a lower standard and you put in an HOA so to that there's long-term maintenance on it. Instead, we left these residences off of Ormsby and, uh, El Delora and Green Tree and, um, Deodar Street. We left them with no maintenance for over twenty years. And it is the city's duty, not the county, because the county did not direct how these roads were paved. It was the city's responsibility to have these roads either built up to the standard, and my argument is that they absolutely are built up to the standard, the rural standard, which is no curbs, no streetlights, no sidewalks, um, no gutters. So all in all, my simple ask. Again, here's the rural standard. I guess I'll I'll talk about this a little bit. On the left-hand side, you have Los Ranchitos HOA. Completed negotiations with the city in two thousand and fifteen to establish a new rural standard for horse trails within LRHOA in lieu of streetlights, sidewalks, and curb and gutter. The initial rural standard will be implemented along Vallejo Avenue in front of Julian Charter School, blah, blah. This is essentially saying that we had negotiations with an HOA that said, we do not need you to to improve the streets to our standard, because you will meet the rural standard, which I one hundred percent agree with, which is what we should do, because we care about that rural nature. And ironically, before I knew about any of this, when we talked about why the Inyanés, I said, Temecula is Temecula because of neighborhoods like Meadowview, like Los. like Los Ranchitos, like Santiago Estates, and like the neighborhood off of Green Tree, which are these very low-density rural areas. That's what makes Temecula Temecula. We don't want all of the curbs and sidewalks and gutters. That doesn't, that is a box cutter city, and that's why we have it in our general plan that we do not want that." The question is, is why didn't we have this applied across, equally across our zoning? And all I've asked here tonight is for a subcommittee to be created, to have more discussion on the matter. I have shown you that the map we were provided with is over thirty thousand dollars of annual mistakes. The ask of my, my end resolution that could change in the subcommittee is around twenty-four thousand dollars annually to maintain these roads that have gone unmaintained for two decades. And, and I guess my hesitation comes from when I initially asked this of city staff, and they came back with a seventy-five million dollar proposal, which, when you tear off the layers, you take out the private HOA-maintained streets and you throw it out. That's fifty-three million dollars that no one, no rational policymaker would ever make. You take out the unmaintained Nicholas roads, you take out Sommers Bend, which they did after the fact. You take out all of these roads, and you're left with literally four to eight streets, depending on the criteria that we use, that have gone left unmaintained for twenty years. And I would say that it is at the fault of the city for these going unmaintained. With that being said, I would love to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, absolutely, since you're offering it up. The four to eight streets that you've sort of got us down to, what are they?
What are the streets? Green Tree, Deodar, which is attached to Green Tree, Ormsby, and El Delora, which is attached to Ormsby.
So those four streets are what you're looking at, right?
Yes.
That's my only question.
And I'll just say how those streets came about. Literally, all you have to do is ask for residential streets in Temecula that were built after we incorporated, that have no HOA and are not maintained by the city. And you're literally left with those streets. That is it. Of course, there are, there may be a few that I missed. Right, there may be, I went through every street in here, and there may be more that meet our criteria, which is why a subcommittee would need to be created. But I can tell you that there isn't more than, and depending on the criteria, right, I use those two because they have multiple access points. So there's, there's a few streets in Temecula that you can only go one way in and one way out. I would say that those could be more considered driveways, if you will, than actual roads. So these streets are the only ones that have public access from multiple points. The public uses them on a daily basis, a lot. And they have gone, again, left unmaintained for twenty years, and they do currently meet our standard.
So in this subcommittee, are you looking to, to take them at, for city maintenance? Or are you looking possibly at creating HOAs for these areas so they can maintain through an HOA? Are you open to all of that? That's what I'm, I, I don't want to get into a subcommittee where your focus is one thing. And so that's what I'm thinking. If we're gonna go to a subcommittee, I want everything still on the table.
I, I think I have proven myself to be someone who isn't just one-minded. This is my way, this is the only way I believe. I'm absolutely open to other suggestions. My main concern right now would be to publicly maintain these roads, because the, the idea to create an HOA, that ship sailed twenty years ago when this development was built, and the city has a policy in place for instances like this not to happen. That's why we have our dirt road policy. You turn one of our dirt roads into a paved road, you build it up to our standard, or if you don't, you put an HOA in place and you build it to a lesser standard. None of those, neither of those were abided by. They were built to a quote-unquote lesser standard and then left to maintain on the private homeownership. And we all know if we can't get four city council members to agree, good luck getting thirty-plus homeowners to agree on maintaining a pothole on your road.
So I don't have any more questions, but I think kind of before we get to that first question, I've got a few things I need to say.
We got a public comment. You wanna go there?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, let's do public comment first.
And then we'll go to
No, okay.
Jean, I'm not sure about the last name. Jean DeLuigi. Come on up, sir. You have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Jean DeLuigi, small business owner, Vale Ranch Self-Storage, four-three-nine-eight-oh, Mailonvale Road, off Temecula Parkway. Twenty-six years in business. We just celebrated recently. Thrilled to be in this community. Our flagship property is there, and we most certainly love the community, what, and everything about it. We love our customers, we love the people. And I've gotten an earful tonight. This has been quite an education, I have to say. I'm also president of the Property Owners Association for the Vale Ranch Commercial Site, which goes from Butterfield Ranch Road to Red Hawk Road, Temecula Parkway to Wolf Store Road. The reason I'm here tonight is advocate for a accurate subcommittee that has all the information done properly. We're a commercial site. We have about a two-mile road that makes absolutely no sense. It's seventy-six foot wide. It's being used by the public on a daily basis, probably ninety-five to five. We barely use the road. Our patrons barely use the road. General public uses it for everything. We've had carjackings, we've had car racings down there, we've had people come by going east or west, three-wide. We've had drug deals down there. We had to paint our curbs red to get rid of the eighteen-wheelers that park down there on a daily basis. And they bring the kind of problems the city just doesn't want. Seeing what happened in Angel Stadium, we didn't want the same thing to happen to our street. We painted the curbs red. We put up about forty parking signs. We towed a couple of the, of the big rigs off the street that just wouldn't leave. Homeless people followed. Again, the drug deals and this kind of thing. So we're doing our best, and we are struggling to maintain. In the words of Brendan, if I can use them, "We would consider ourselves to be second standard." When Vale Ranch Commercial Site was created, it was done by Mark II Development. And for whatever reason, it was done through the county, and someone thought it'd be a great idea to put some kind of an access road that's seventy-six foot wide, including a bike path, in behind on the south side of our property that borders up against Temecula Creek. Okay, we, we can deal with that. The goal was that we would actually, for legal access or for a legal transaction fee of about one dollar, we would like to transfer the ownership of that property over to the county. Problem happened. On the way to the county, the city annexed the property. It's now had to be done by city standard. Now we're sitting in a situation where it was built to county standards, and the city tells us, "No. It's, doesn't meet our standard, because it doesn't have the following." We do have curbs, we do have gutters, we do have drain basins, we do have a bike path. We don't have lights, because the Palomar District, which was very prominent during that period of time, didn't allow you to have lights. So as a property owner association, we're struggling. We're absolutely struggling to keep up with the maintenance of this commercial site. Because we believe public use, it is destroying our street. And we're doing our best, sixty, seventy thousand dollars yearly, put into that street, try to maintain it, get rid of these potholes, keep up with the red paintings on the curb. And I'm just here to advocate for a subcommittee. For twenty-five years, I've been asking for the Public Works Department to maintain our street. Get it up to the same standard as every new property that's being built in the city of Temecula. I think, I think we deserve it. We pay a fair amount of tax to do that. And it's my hope that with a subcommittee, it'll be someone that I can at least talk to, to possibly negotiate maybe some kind of agreement for continued maintenance, or giving back some of the property to the owners that would like to expand. The property is all private, but it's being used by the public. Well, that puts us in a horrible situation. From a liability standpoint, we don't know what's gonna happen if a front-end collision occurs on that property that belongs to us. We've got a heck of a, of a bad situation. So as a property owner and the president of the Property Owner Association, I'm here to plead with the council to create this subcommittee, but generate it with accuracy, and take a look at all these properties, the ones that were developed by the county. Thank you very much.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes all public comments on this item.
All right, so, Councilmember Schwenk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things. I want to use this opportunity, because at the last meeting, I didn't get a chance to, and this is what I was gonna say, and this is the reason why I voted against this last meeting. We have a policy. It's policy number eight. It's a council protocol manual. And Council, Mayor Potem Calvis, you actually mentioned it, the request for staff time that exceed four hours or essentially one-half of a regular business day. This has been going back since, gosh, I want to say end of November, at least that I was aware of. After a council meeting, you and I were upstairs in the city manager's office, talking actually about affordable housing, and Councilmember Alexander came in, and this conversation about these streets popped up then. I want to say that was end of November. And we, we started getting updates from the city manager's office, you know, in January and, and February, and sort of like, okay, this is a lot of time that's being invested into this without a subcommittee, without consensus. So I would just want to sort of remind us, this is a way that we can hold each other accountable, and then also remind our city manager and our city attorney that we actually have this policy going forward. I think it's important, and there's a mechanism for him to put it on the agenda. The city manager can actually put it on the agenda, and we can talk about it. I think that would have been a cleaner, cleaner way for me to kind of wrap my head around it. Now we sort of have, you know, where you met with staff and maybe gave them direction that you're not agreeing with now. I think if you're going to look at this, which staff did, you start large. You, you go to the big picture and you say, "I need all the streets in." The public speaker actually made a point for me, because I had Wolf Store Road on, I had it pulled up on Google Maps. And I said, "Do you think, you know, you've got four streets here, five streets, six streets, don't you think that other homeowners, business owners, knowing that that's owned by a POA, are gonna come forward and say, 'Well, if you're doing this on Green Tree, if you're doing this on Ormsby, why not do it on Wolf Store? Why not do it on these other streets?'" So I, so I think staff did a good job of going large, and then we can kind of go, go down. I get the sense that you're kind of backing into this a little bit, and, and that's a little problematic. You know, I think good policy is to look at the total system. It gets worse when, see, no, 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 it's not the whole thing. I don't want everybody, just want a few streets. I think that's where, for me, it becomes really problematic, because like, even if an HOA owns a street, and I used to live on a street that we paid an assessment, an additional assessment every month to maintain the street. Don't think for a second that those HOAs aren't gonna go to their residents and say, "Hey, it looks like the city's starting to take over maintenance of these streets. We'd, we'd love to get on board. Let's go to the city and advocate for this. Let's go to the city and make a case." And all of a sudden, you have folks down here from all over the city advocating for, you know, the city to take over the maintenance of their street. So I think, I think if we go into a subcommittee, which, which again, I am not supportive of, I'm not supportive of going into a subcommittee, it feels like we're kind of getting to a place where, where we're backing into a few streets that make sense for you, and, and, and I have an issue with that. I also have an issue with, and I've been hitting the same pothole multiple times on Inez and Jefferson, when I go to pick up my kids from school, every single day. And we have a significant portion of streets, main arterials that are commerce, that are transportation-related, that, that are families trying to get their kids to school. They're not small cul-de-sacs, they're not little streets. These are main arterials that need significant amount of funding. And even as small as some of these, you know, Green Tree and Ormsby, even as small as the number of those, a financial number of those are, it, it matters to me if we're going to prioritize one street over another. And I think, and I know, we're opening up a can of worms with this. If we go into a subcommittee, you're gonna see Wolf Store Road. And I don't disagree with some of the things that are said. Like, I don't. But, but how does, what is the mechanism for this? Well, we did one tonight. It's a CFD. Like, I would fully support going to the residents and saying, "Hey, we can walk alongside you as you form an assessment district, and if we're slurry sealing close to your street, well, then we'll do it with you. We'll, we'll come alongside you." It will be cheaper if we're adding a couple streets. But for us to sort of wholesale go through the city and, and look at this, I just think, again, we are opening up a can of worms. What started as bad policy has turned even worse when you're only including a couple streets. It doesn't seem realistic or fair.
I just want to rebuttal that real quick. Is that okay? Absolutely.
Thank you, and you have the floor. If I could just add something there, Councilmember Schwenk. One of the biggest things, too, is why we were receiving so many emails, was also the fact that before this came to Mayor Potem Calvis, I actually ended up starting getting emails from Larry Slusser. And so all of a sudden, before Mayor Potem found out what I was going through, he kind of was having his own separate thing. So that's why all of a sudden, we're starting to get all these emails going through. And the only reason that we found out that we had the same situation was because when I was walking in the hallway after their meeting, I heard my name. And so I asked him, I said, "Hey, what's going on? I hear you're talking about..." And he says, "Listen, I just hear you're dealing with the same thing on your end of, you know, on your district." And so that's when Calvis and I started coming together and saying, "Okay, these are very similar. How can we move forward?" So we started working with our own residents. And so that's why I believe you guys were getting so much information, was because it's from, was from two different sections, two different districts. So I just wanted to add that in as to why there was a tremendous amount of information flowing.
So first off, when I asked for the, the very specific streets, I didn't choose these streets. It was a criteria, and the streets appeared after the criteria was made. The criteria is very simple. I didn't say, "I want Green Tree and Ormsby paved." The criteria is residential streets that were developed after nineteen eighty-nine, that did not have an HOA in place, and that are paved, and that have, had no maintenance by the city. So I didn't choose these streets. These streets appeared, and that's an extremely broad criteria. And out of that broad criteria, came above Green Tree and Ormsby, and they're attached streets. It's not like I said, "I want Green Tree and Ormsby." Those just happen to be the two that meet the criteria. As far as Wolf Street, I, I am specifically talking about the subcommittee being a residential. I haven't looked into all the commercial, and you can say, "Well, commercial have a pathway to getting maintained." And I don't know the specific intricacies of Wolf Street, if that's a private road, if that was private from the moment it was formed. There's so many intricacies that go to that particular street, and every particular street has its own stories. But again, I didn't choose these streets. These chose, these streets appeared after the very broad criteria that were essentially, we created this minority of streets. The city created this minority of streets. The developer came in, developed a road, and the city has a policy in place. You either develop them to our standards, and if you don't, which I showed you the policy, you put an HOA in place. Neither of those happened. So we created this, this minority of streets, and we left these homeowners with undue burden. And to be not supportive of the subcommittee, I just showed you how this map is false. I am telling you that, that the information that we have been given is thirty thousand dollars of annual expenditures, which is of false information. So you're, you're okay not looking into thirty thousand dollars of false information that was given. I showed you policy that you, if you're a developer, you have to do A or B. You're saying it's okay if you don't do A or B, even though it only was done twice in the history of Temecula. I showed you a rural standard that these streets meet, that's in our general plan under our land use element, and you're okay saying, "We're not gonna do that. We do that for every other very low-density, but you guys are different." You're okay taking the minority of streets that we created as a city and continuing to discriminate against them. The, the question is why? Why? How could you be okay going against policy? How could you be okay going against our general planning and land use element? How could you be okay with me showing you streets that are slurry, that the city staff is telling you are not slurry, and not wanting a subcommittee? As an unbiased, impartial policymaker, which you are supposedly supposed to be, you are against that. How and why? It makes no sense unless you have been pre-influenced prior to a public hearing on what was disclosed today. And if you can answer me how you're okay with false data, how you're okay going against policy, and how you're okay going against our general plan and land use element, that would be greatly appreciated.
So I think you're, you're going to a place where So, I think you're, you're going to a place where, you know, first of all, I'm offended you're attacking staff the way you are, I think is inappropriate.
They provided us false information.
I'm disappointed that we had to have you present from, from the dais, or from the podium like that in a way that, I just feel like what's happening here is, you know, you had an ask, and you're kind of getting to the answer you need. I think, and I articulated myself fairly well, that this is opening a huge can of worms. You had a business owner come over and say, what about me? And you didn't even think about that. You didn't think about that? What about the Promenade Mall? You don't think for a second that the Promenade Mall's not going to come and say, have you seen our Ring Road lately?
It's a private road.
All the roads you're advocating for are private roads. So, the, the problem that I have with it, the problem that I have with it is you're, the way that this is going down doesn't feel right. And to me, when things don't feel right, I kind of have to just back off and, maybe we should pause and think about it. You know, I just don't feel comfortable with it. I didn't from the moment that I saw some of the data and, and sort of started to talk with folks in the community about, well, why? Or, what would happen if we did this? Again, bring the current roads that we have up to the standard that is acceptable for Temecula, do that. Do Jefferson. Do Winchester. Do Sections of Margarita. Do those. That's important, that's important. And, and that's really, Mayor Protem Calvis is where I'm landing with this. I think it's important that we have a standard, and, and much of, you know, what we're talking here tonight is, is just problematic policy. And I'll just, that's my perspective, take it or leave it, that's what I believe.
First off, you didn't answer one of my questions that I had for you, you just skated around. False information that I gave you. I'm not asking to create policy, we already have the policy in place. We already have the dirt road policy. I'm saying to enforce the policy that we already have in place. We already have the rural standard in our general plan under our land use element, nothing, I am creating absolutely no policy. I am asking us as a council to enforce the current policy we have equally across the same zones. And you have a bad feeling about this because of everything I said? You were given false information, I just proved it to you. The subcommittee should be created by that in itself. You are saying that you're okay with $30,000 of annual mistakes and then not enforcing policy on those annual mistakes. You are saying that the policy that we have for the dirt road policy, that's policy that we didn't abide by on these very few streets. And then you said, which I have been waiting for you to say, is that every road that I have in question is a private road. And I don't have a, I'm not on my little podium anymore, but the question is public or private streets? And let's see if I can show this on the screen here. There it is, you can't really see it, but I'll read it to you. "A public dedicated but not accepted street refers to a street or road that has been officially designated for public use by a government entity such as the county board of supervisors or city council, but has not been accepted or maintained by the governing body responsible for its upkeep." The governing body responsible for its upkeep, that is us. We have not accepted it, we have not accepted it because we say it's not up to our standard. I just showed you, we have a rural standard. These streets are up to our rural standard. Another one, we have a policy in place for streets to become private streets. And unless I missed a planning commission meeting, and I know I did not, that these were voted on to become private streets, these are not private streets. Private streets may be used with the approval and consent of the planning commission when the planning commission finds three things. There's adequate provision for their construction and continued maintenance, there's no adequate provision for their constructed maintenance, the welfare of the occupants of the development will be adequately served, the public welfare will not be impaired, the public travels through Green Tree, the public travels through Ormsby, there's a cut-through on Inez at five o'clock traffic. Anyone that hops on Inez at five o'clock knows that the public welfare would be impaired if Ormsby was a private street and gated community. And my favorite one of all is there's a public sign on Green Tree Park, and I can't show it on the thing, but it says, "No overnight parking, dumping, loitering, or alcoholic beverages." Temecula Municipal Code 12.04. So, first off, we're saying we're putting a public Temecula municipal sign on a private road? What is Temecula Municipal Code 12.04, you may ask, Councilmember Schwenk? Well, let's see, it talks about streets, sidewalks, and public places. It has rules and regulations applicable in city parks. Have you ever been to Green Tree Park? Have you ever taken your kids on a slide down Green Tree Park? The answer is no, because there is no city park off of this. One, it was labeled wrong, I would believe it's private property, it should say private property no trespassing, but we put a Temecula municipal sign calling this a city park, and the ironic thing out of all of this, and on the city municipal sign that the city does not want to accept maintenance for, under 12.04, it says, "Roads for public use, that provisions of the California Vehicle Code are applicable in the city parks upon any way or place, whatever nature which is publicly maintained and open to the use of the public for vehicular travel." We put a public sign saying that this is a public park, or even that, if it's not a public park, it's a public street that's publicly maintained on a private road? The answer is no, it's not a private road. It was never intended to be a private road, it was built as a public road, and it has gone unaccepted by our city council and our local government for over 20 years. And now that the street is deteriorating, we are saying build it up to the current city standard, when the current city standard is already applied, because it is already up to our rural standard, which I showed you. The fact that you have a bad taste in your mouth because of this is because I just showed you that you're voting against a, a subcommittee that would look into false information, that would look in against why we didn't abide by our policy 20 years ago, and would look into why we are going against our general plan and land use element. That is why you feel bad about this, because you know, deep down, what I am proposing is what should be done. We have done wrong for 20-plus years, and you are, are sitting here saying that you feel bad about this. I feel bad about it, but you can't answer why.
So, you don't need me or my vote for the subcommittee? You don't, I don't have to support it, right? We have four people, you need three votes to move it forward, and maybe your two other colleagues are supportive, and maybe they are, I don't know. All I can tell you is how I want to vote on this. And it doesn't feel right when you say, well, you know, I didn't specifically call out Green Tree or Ormsby, but they just happened to like magically appear on the list, that's like, does anyone believe that? I have, hold on a second. I wasn't going to say this, and I'm not going to say who the email's from, but someone that supported your campaign says, and I quote, "I gave you permission to put your sign on my property based on what you shared with me, I believed you." So, I ask you, why all of a sudden is Green Tree the big thing? We have a former council member that actually lives on that street and didn't bring this item forward forever, doesn't want to support this, and if this does pass, wants the community to know that she doesn't support it. Why? Because there are mechanisms in place for homeowners to do what they need to do to maintain their streets. That, there's mechanisms, and we can support that. You don't need a subcommittee to do this. You don't need a subcommittee for what you want to do to have, to have homeowners come alongside the city, form a CFD, or an assessment district, or an HOA, or whatever they need to do to pay their fair share. Don't ask regular constituents, residents of the city, again, to subsidize this. Don't ask them to do that when you're going to be, get people complaining that you're not fixing the streets on, again, Jefferson, Inez, Margarita, Winchester. You drive around the city? We've got work to do, let's focus on that. And my final point is, this whole thing is problematic, because as we sit here and we debate these things until the evening, and we send staff time and council time, we only have a limited number of bandwidth in our, in our world. And as we're doing that, as we're arguing, as we're not functioning as a council, you're seeing other councils in the region seeing a power void, and they're snatching the opportunity, and they're forming groups, they're forming task force on education, they're forming task force on transportation. While we're arguing about this, they're going, we're going to lead out on some things, we're going to move our region forward. And we're left behind arguing about Green Tree and Ormsby. And that's all. You don't need my vote, I'd call for the question if there's nothing else, and you can vote.
Well, I want to say something, and I have to rebuttal everything you said, because everything you say continues to be so, so false. Marion Edwards, who said that lives off of Green Tree, she doesn't live off Green Tree, she lives off Via Telesio, which is a private road on our map. So, she lives on a, on a street connected to Green Tree, but not off of Green Tree. Roads that become into our public maintained system, they start out as public non-maintained roads. Not the, the streets that were incorporated from county, we had to legally accept all of those streets, but any street that is developed at one point in time is a public non-maintained road. Take Somers Bend, for instance. All of those roads excluding the HOA ones are public non-maintained until a developer is done, and then the public accepts the maintenance of those roads. And, and to say that we shouldn't sit here and debate Green Tree and Ormsby, infrastructure is one of the basic duties of city council. We are also doing the higher education and looking at bringing to college at Temecula, we're doing all those things simultaneously. And if you think for one instance that I want to sit here longer than you do and argue over these two roads, you're absolutely false. I would much rather be home with my family. But I took this position to fight for instances like this. And in regards to the email that you just read, when he's talking about, he let me put my sign on his yard because I told him that I was about government transparency, and I have shown you that tonight, and I will show you that for the next three years that I'm in this seat, and that's why he voted for me. And that's why I'm in office, and that's why the 17-year incumbent is not in this seat, because of government transparency that I promised that I would show, and that I'm absolutely delivering on. So, yes, that email that you had printed out and you read, I absolutely agree with it, and I am abiding by my campaign promise for government transparency, which is why I showed you false information from staff, which is why I showed you policy that we are not abiding by, which is why I showed you the general planned land use element that we are not abiding by. A simple ask for a subcommittee to do more fact-finding is all that I'm asking. That's all I have to say. And the reason I went after you is because you asked me the questions, so I rebutted. I didn't pick you out of, out of the four of us. You just asked questions, I rebutted, and we moved forward.
That's fine, I mean, this is part of it, it's like, this is how we get stuff done.
Absolutely, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just appreciate the debate, I want to add a few things to, to the conversation that I heard. Just going back to November, December, and the vice mayor and I, we spoke about this today. Nobody up here intentionally misled the council. Let me just make that clear, okay? We agreed, we as a staff, Pat Thomas, his team, we agreed to take the next 60 days and put together a comprehensive inventory, which manually done, took all of 60 days. Were there some errors? Vice Mayor pointed out a couple of things, okay? We did this in-house, we did this for the vice mayor. That report is comprehensive. Pages and pages of linear streets that we had to cross-reference with maps without knowing the right of way that's needed. So, for the record, let me just make it clear, we broke this analysis down into two sections, right? We broke it down into publicly dedicated but not accepted streets and not constructed to the current city standards. These are referred to as non-accepted but publicly dedicated. Super technical, I get it. And I'm going to ask Pat Thomas, if you will, to speak to some of the more technical natures of this in a minute. We did an analysis of that. That, that came up with 85,134 linear feet, or approximately 16 miles, citywide, okay? This was good information, this was information that the staff wanted, and we thought we were providing something that was going to be helpful to the vice mayor, and I, of course, I shared it with all four of you as we were doing this analysis. The second piece was streets not accepted and constructed as private streets with HOA maintenance, mostly the gated communities, these would be kind of the Red Hawk, referred to as private streets not accepted. We did that analysis, we voluntarily did that analysis, and we thought that was helpful to the broader conversation, which we're clearly not having now, but we thought that was a good start. That was our spirit, and that was our intent. So, I know the vice mayor knows that, I thought we hit the target, maybe we didn't, but we're here tonight talking about this. But it's important for context, right? And so, I never labeled this a Mayor Protem Calvis 75 million dollar proposal, I did not do that, nor did Pat Thomas. We broke this down into segments, if you added it all up, yeah, it, it does come up to 75 million, if you're going to take all these private streets and bring them up to today's city standards. Super technical, I get it, but that's the standard, that's the policy, that's the standard that we're abiding by today. And so, we had an obligation to sort of evaluate that and what that looks like. We also had a obligation to provide some methodology to how we arrived at this. So, yes, we have 30 years of street maintenance, we can put together metrics, we can make some basic assumptions, and we can cost out what it would cost to take over maintenance of all of these public streets that haven't been accepted into our street system. We spend millions on streets, so this was a good exercise. We did it, we thought we were doing what would be helpful to the conversation, what would be helpful to tonight. Pat, I know the information was meant to be, it was really an internal exercise, this wasn't a published report, but it was something that we agreed to do, it's been shared, it's, it's been out in the community, but it was an internal exercise, cross-referencing maps with streets. And I think since the last bit of information that we shared with the city council, which might have been like February 19th, I think February 22nd, staff was able to start to scrub this even more. So, was it final? We thought it was, but we found some errors. Somers Bend was mentioned, we've scrubbed it since. I don't believe the February 22nd map is been shared with the city council, but it was work that staff was continuing to do after the fact. Pat, do you mind just taking a minute? Just to kind of speak to some of what I did, and some of the technical nature of, of what's on the table.
I wanted to go back to that concept of these streets that were, and this was, again, back in county time before the city incorporated, these streets that were offered for dedication and accepted for access, for use, but not accepted for maintenance. That was a specific policy and a practice of the county at the time, and again, that was inherited by the city. In order for either the county or the city to take over maintenance of those streets that were dedicated in that way, it would require another specific action of the city council, to adopt a resolution specifically to take over maintenance of the streets, which has not been done for any of these streets that we're talking about. And I think the city attorney can, can expand on that further if necessary, but that's, like I said, that's kind of where we stand today, is these streets have not been officially accepted by the city for maintenance, and therefore, we have not been providing maintenance. Now, as Mayor Protem Council mentioned, you know, I can't say that, you know, we're, we're 100% perfect, I mean, there might be a minor street out there, and, and I trust your pictures that if there's a minor street out there that got included in a slurry seal project inadvertently, that may have happened, and I don't have any explanation for that, probably shouldn't have happened. But we're trying to go by the information that we have available to us that says, you know, whether or not these streets have been accepted for maintenance, and whether or not we provide maintenance on those streets, and for a vast majority of these ones that we've been talking about, they have not been accepted, and therefore, we have not been providing maintenance.
And I just want to say that I have the utmost respect for staff, although I've, I've shown these mistakes that have been done, I do respect the amount of work and time you've put into this. And, and I'm not saying that, that I don't trust you, or that, that you lied to us, I'm saying that there has been, and I've showed you streets that have been, let's say that they were inadvertently slurry sealed. And the ironic thing is that the, the streets in question, they would love to be inadvertently slurry sealed, right? And, and we inherited these streets as dirt roads from the county. We changed the game when we let a developer pave them. When we let the developer pave them, they become our responsibility to either publicly maintain or have them privately be maintained by their HOA. We left these streets with no mechanism to maintain their roads. And I didn't choose these streets, and I keep going back to that, these streets appear, they literally appear, when all you do is you ask for streets that were built when the city, after the city incorporated, that have no mechanism in place, and that aren't maintained, and that are paved. And these streets literally appear, and you, if you do your due diligence, which I'm asking the subcommittee to do and to see, you will see that these roads are literally out of thin air, they, they appear. I didn't pick these roads, I didn't choose these roads, we developed these roads after the incorporation, and we left them without a way to be maintained. All I'm asking for is a subcommittee to look into why and how these roads can get into our public maintenance system. A very simple ask. A very simple ask.
Well, I haven't said anything. And I was doing that on purpose because I, you, you make a very compelling argument. Zach make a very, makes a very compelling argument because it is a can of worms. It's Pandora's box. And so it's, but at the same token, I, I hear what you're saying. So I'm, I've changed my opinion. I think it does need to be looked at. Now, I'm not on the same page as you. I'm not looking at it to bring it in. I'm looking at it to find a solution for them. But I don't think it's the city's responsibility to maintain those roads. So i- if you're okay with a subcommittee that is good, and I would recommend me being on it and you being on it because I would rather be communicating with you directly. And, and I, I think you got to convince me and I got to convince you. So, you know, I, I don't know what Jessica, but I think she is leaning more with you. So it would make no sense to have you two on a subcommittee. And we know Zach is probably going to push back. No. So I'm, I'm open-minded, but I'm open-minded to a solution that doesn't necessarily include the city. So if you're okay with a subcommittee that, that could possibly be, be the end game, I'm, I'm okay with it.
I am open to that because I feel that I can show you through this information and data that we should maintain it. But if, if through the information and data that I present to you, you say, I still don't think, then we find a solution that is, may not be the, the solution that I think is the answer.
Okay. So let's vote.
Wait, do I get a say in this at all?
I didn't know you.
I was all quiet.
Okay.
So I am leaning towards this.
Yeah.
My biggest concern as well, though, is the fact that these are my residents in my district.
Right.
So kind of where, now I've spent several hours again with my residents as well on Ormsby and looking at this. So do, are you going to take over from there for, with my residents in District Two?
Well, i- i- it, this is a citywide.
I understand that, but I've already kind of started this ball rolling since I think we said, what, October, November timeframe?
I really feel like if I wasn't in the subcommittee and you guys, it'd be another three hours, uh, committee, uh, city council meeting to discuss this. Whereas if I'm involved with it and I agree or disagree, whatever.
We're going to be doing that in a subcommittee, not here on the dais per se.
Right. But you would have my word, Councilwoman Alexander, that we would do what is best by your constituents. You know the path that I am on and what I am looking to do, and I wouldn't change that, uh, view unless there was more information that was given that, that said, hey, this is, this is a better solution than what I thought was the best solution.
Okay. I just want to make sure that my residents know that I didn't just like walk away from this after just dealing with them for.
Let, let me remind you all as well. The subcommittee doesn't make any final decision.
Of course it doesn't.
The subcommittee gathers information, makes a recommendation to the council, even if it's one, one member says one thing and one member says another. And then the council has to make the decision as to how best to deal with these roads and the, and the policy issues that come out of that.
And I think the bottom line is, I'm looking for a solution, and I think he's looking for a solution. So whether our solutions match up is going to be the, the thing. But, but I think your solution and your solution are probably going to be very parallel. Whereas mine, I, I, most of the roads in my district are the dirt roads that aren't accepted. So that, that's kind of like out of this picture, but.
And I, I will also point out that by having the subcommittee, as you two have discussed, that puts the focus of the staff at your disposal. And the staff, you will tell the staff what information you want and what options you want to be considered.
Yeah.
Rather than having four council members negotiate with different people in the city.
All right, motion. So I, I just need to clarify, please. Okay, so, um, Jonathan, if you can throw up the slide really quickly. Because I just want to make sure. This reflects the council's desire here. So, um, question number one, the, the council's motion is going to be to go ahead and create an ad hoc subcommittee to discuss the matter. The pointees are Mayor Protam Calphys and Mayor Stewart. With respect to the narrowing, are we talking about only those streets that council member Calph, I'm sorry, Mayor Protam Calphys, um, is referencing, utilizing his, um, what he has referenced, utilizing his current criteria? Is that what we are referring to?
I would say we would use staff and not just rely on my data because there may be more streets that I missed. So I, and again, they, they may just appear. So I would not say just solely these streets.
Okay, but utilizing that criteria?
Yes.
So may I, I need to add something really quick before we move any further. I think utilizing that criteria is problematic.
Yeah, I do too.
You're going to leave out streets in District Five that don't fit into your mold.
Yeah.
And I'm going to have an issue with that.
I agree. Also, I totally agree.
Well, I can tell you, so District Five has streets, and this is the, the thing that I'm saying. If you don't look at this from a system-wide perspective, it's going to be a problem. And I'm just saying that. Subcommittee, do what you want, but it's going to be a problem.
Right. No, I, I totally agree with Councilmember Schwenk. Is this has got to be a more comprehensive, bigger look. You know, that criteria, yeah, okay, but I, I think there's going to be a lot of ass going on. And, and I, I want to be prepared for those, uh, those comments and those people who are going to come and say, well, what about me? And the what about me's are going to happen. So, so I, I think it should be a bigger, a bigger scope on what we're looking at so we can have more answers at the end of the subcommittee.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
And, and I would ask to include not just residential, and you need it, we already had a public speaker for business-related. So if it's business-owned, if it's, if it's not a residential, we, it needs to be extremely broad.
Yeah.
Um, which is, I think staff tried to do that. I think that's where you start.
Yeah.
You have to start there.
My only ask would be to leave out privately dedicated streets. That $53 million, the HOA, the gated communities.
Yeah.
The, the private industrial roads. Those are private roads. They were, they weren't, they were developed as private roads. They didn't want to be public roads, so leave those out.
But, but how do you determine that? Because for instance, the Vale Ranch location, that is, i- if you've ever been on it, it's a public road. But it's a private road. It's like, so, okay, so now what do we do? Because that is a public thoroughfare. More residents go down that road than any other road, so.
That's a great point. And, and my ask for the subcommittee is that we review current, uh, private versus public definitions to make sure that it's fairly inaccurately applied to all streets.
And I think that's a good scope too. Let's, let's pull that in.
Pass the widest net is what you need to do.
I'm, I'm totally okay with that. And I would also ask the subcommittee to review current standards usage to ensure that it's fairly inaccurately, our standards, right? Our rural standard and our, um, normal standard, the two standards that we have.
Right.
And then also look at the unpaved, the paved road development policy.
Yeah.
To ensure that we're accurately applying that across the streets.
Okay.
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 So, Mr. City Manager, um, what I'm hearing is that this is, um, applicable to the acceptance of streets and to the city maintained street system for street maintenance of all, um, streets.
We're keeping it citywide.
And, and keeping it citywide and related policies and standards as well.
And for accuracy of data, we're keeping it citywide. In the subcommittee, if we can scrub this a number of different ways, and of course bring back to the full council sort of how those conversations go. But I think that's why we started originally going big, and we figured we'd, we'd narrow down eventually. And so we're not, we're back to, let's start big, and then we can get into sort of, you know, the weeds and the details.
Yeah. I would agree.
All right. Okay, so, um, if we can have a motion.
Did you motion?
I did motion, yes.
I will second that motion.
It's been motion second. Please vote. All right, that passes 3-1. And we are finally, we have departmental receiving files. Items for future agendas, please nobody. All right, hearing none. Okay. City managers report.
Nothing tonight.
All right. Uh, city attorney?
Nothing tonight.
All right. We are adjourned.